Judge. Recently, the Chief Executive Officer of the Chicago Public Schools retained me to serve as an independent hearing officer in this matter. The purpose of this hearing is to enable me to receive public comment from concerned persons, specifically including representatives of the CEO, the school community, and interested members of the public concerning the CEO's proposal to reassign the National Teachers Academy's boundary, which is located at 55 West Sirmack. Excuse me. Notice of the hearing was served on the school community, and notice of this hearing was also served on the public by newspaper publications. Pursuant to the said notice, this hearing was scheduled to begin at 6:00 PM, and let the record reflect that we are beginning at 6:02 PM. Pursuant to the directives provided in the document entitled "Procedures for Public Hearings on Proposed School Closure, Consolidation, Phase-Out, Reconstitution, or Reassignment Boundary Change," the hearing officer is solely responsible for conducting the hearing and is to conduct the hearing in an efficient and impartial manner. So, there are some guidelines that I would ask everyone to follow here this evening, and respect. This is a public hearing, therefore I will expect that all in attendance will show courteous, respectful, and civil behavior. Please, if you have cell phones, turn them off at this time or put them on vibrate. Also, please turn off any other electronic devices at this time that could disturb these proceedings. This is an opportunity for public comment regarding the CEO's proposal. It is not an opportunity for questions and answers. During the course of the proceedings, please do not clap or cheer if you agree with a witness or a speaker's testimony. Similarly, do not boo or make any other negative verbalization if you are opposed to what a witness or a speaker has to say. Please understand, I am not an employee of the Chicago Public School System or the Board of Education. I will conduct an orderly hearing, and I will show respect to each speaker, and I ask that you respect me and the serious purpose of this meeting by honoring the guidelines I have just set forth. I will first receive comments from representatives from CPS concerning why the CEO is proposing to reassign National Teachers Academy's boundary. Then I will hear from any elected officials in attendance. Then, those individuals who have signed up to speak this evening one hour prior to the start of the hearing and within thirty minutes after the start of the hearing will be called to speak primarily in the order in which they have signed in. So, testimony will be heard in this matter until all who have signed in to be heard by 5:30 PM have been heard, or until we have reached 8:30 PM, whichever occurs first. Individuals who have signed in to speak during the designated hours to do so will each be given two minutes to present their comments. This limitation is to ensure that we have sufficient time to hear all the speakers. There are three lights that are located on the podium, on the top-left side of the podium, right in front of me, which each speaker will speak from. The green light indicates that your two minutes have begun to run. The yellow light appears when you have thirty seconds remaining in your time, and the red light indicates that you, your two minutes have expired. Please, respect the red light and return to your seat when it appears. Now, we have a very ambitious schedule this evening with many speakers, and I want everybody to have their opportunity to have their two minutes tonight, so I don't want to waste any time at all. So, I'm going to be calling three names at once. When I call the names, the first name that is called, you'll come to the podium. Number two and number three will line up behind the person at the podium, being respectful of not being in the space of the speaker, of course. Now, a certified court reporter is seated right in front of me. She is here to transcribe everything that is being said at this hearing. Please understand, she cannot record two people speaking simultaneously. Therefore, only one person can speak at a time, and I will determine who that person is. If I have a question for you while you're speaking, please stop speaking and do not begin to answer my question, even if you think you know what I'm going to be asking you, until I have finished the question. As you know, we have a sign and a Spanish interpreter here. If you see somebody come in that you know needs one or the other, I would ask you to please let them know that and let us know that. When you are called upon to speak, please step to the microphone at the podium in front of me. Excuse me. State your name for the record and spell your first and last names so the court reporter can take it down correctly. Please, then state your affiliation, for instance, what school you're from, what community organization, if you're a parent, and so forth. I have been advised that there are one or more students who have signed in to speak this evening. Illinois law prohibits the use of a student's name in these proceedings. It is not supposed to be in the transcript or in the record, so if a student comes forward, you will be assigned a letter such as Student A, Student B, and so forth. Please, any students that are going to be addressing us tonight, do not state your name. When you are speaking, please do so in a conversational tone. The transcript of this proceeding, which I will be using to fulfill my duty, will not indicate any loud or aggressive language or movements. So, please, all of us, help us all, each of us, to have a clear record of these proceedings. That is so very important, because that's what I take away from this hearing when I am doing the work that I am mandated to do. Following this public hearing pursuant to state law and the rules promulgated by the Board governing this hearing, I will prepare and submit to the CEO a written report that summarizes the public comments and documents received at today's hearing and determines whether the CEO complied with the requirements of state law and the final guidelines for school actions. The CEO will include my report and any recommendation submitted to the Board. Finally, the record in this case will remain open until 5:00 PM tomorrow, Tuesday, January 30th, for persons to submit any written materials they want me to consider and make a part of the record. Those materials may be submitted in the following manner: by hand-delivery to the attention of the CPS Law Department at 42 West Madison, or by email using the following email address: transitions, T-R-A-N-S-I-T-I-O-N-S, at cps.edu. I'm going to repeat that again now. The record in this case will remain open until 5 o'clock tomorrow, Tuesday, January 30th, for persons to submit any written materials they want me to consider and make a part of the record. Those materials may be submitted by either hand-delivery to the attention of the CPS Law Department at 42 West Madison, or by email using the following email address: transitions, T-R-A-N-S-I-T-I-O-N-S, at cps.edu. So, if you're a speaker and your two minutes expire and you still have more information you wish to make part of the record, write it down and submit it via hand-delivery or email. Materials submitted after 5:00 PM tomorrow, Tuesday, January 30th will not be considered in my recommendation report and will not be included in the record of this hearing. I'll repeat this information at the end of the hearing before we close. This evening, we are joined by members of the Chicago Board of Education. Will each of you please be good enough to raise your hand and state your name and title so that the members of the audience know who you are?
Gabriela Brazuela, Assistant General Counsel for the Board of Education at the City of Chicago.
Harold Chip Johnson, Chief of Family and Community Engagement in Education.
James Dispensa, Director of School Demographics and Planning.
So, we now have the members of the Board of Education who have been identified, and that concludes my opening comments. Counsel, you may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Gabriela Brazuela. That's G-A-B-R-I-E-L-A-B-R-I-Z-U-E-L-A, and I am an attorney in the Chicago Board of Education's Law Department. I am appearing before you today in connection with the proposal of a Chief Executive Officer or CEO of the Chicago Public Schools regarding the proposed reassignment boundary change of National Teachers Academy, or NTA. At this time, I would like to present the CEO's compiled Exhibit 1, a binder of documents already tendered to you and being submitted for your consideration in support of the proposal. A copy of this binder is also available here in Board Chambers on the podium for public viewing. The binder consists of documentary evidence and written statements demonstrating that the CEO's proposal complies with the requirements of the Illinois School Code and the CEO's Guidelines for School Actions. Specifically, the written statements and documents demonstrate the following. At Tab A, the binder includes notice letters to the parents and guardians of students, school staff members, and local school council members at NTA and South Loop, accompanied by draft transition plans. The notice letters and draft transition plans describe the basis of the proposal, explain how the proposal meets the criteria of the guidelines, and identify supports for a transition. Tab A also includes the notice of the scheduled community meetings and hearings published in the newspaper and affidavits attesting to the delivery of notice to NTA and South Loop parents or guardians, school staff, local school council members, and elected officials. Finally, Tab A includes an affidavit attesting to proper publication of the draft guidelines for school actions on October 1st, the list of qualified independent hearing officers before November 1st, the finalized guidelines for school actions following a 21-day public comment period, the proposal before December 1st, and at least thirty calendar days before the first community meeting, and finally, summaries from community meetings within five days after the meeting. At Tab B, the binder includes the Illinois School Code provisions designating the powers of the Board and outlining the process for school actions. This tab also includes the Board's policy on the review and establishment of school attendance boundaries, the school quality rating policy, and the Chicago Public Schools' space utilization standards. Finally, Tab B includes the CEO's Guidelines for School Actions for the 2017-2018 school year and the CEO's Procedures for Public Hearings on Proposed Boundary Reassignments. At Tab C, the binder includes written evidence in support of the CEO's proposal. Tab C contains the transcripts and summaries from the two community meetings to elicit public comment held at a location convenient to both the NTA and South Loop school communities. Tab C also includes the written statement of Mr. Harold Chip Johnson and the various requests submitted in support of the proposal. Finally, Tab C includes the written statement of Mr. James Dispensa regarding the space utilization with respect to the proposal. At this time, Your Honor, I request the CEO's compiled Exhibit 1 be admitted into the record.
It will be so admitted. Mark is a good one.
Thank you. Your Honor, I would now like to have permission to call the CEO's first representative, Mr. Harold Chip Johnson, who will make a statement in support of the proposal. Mr. Johnson's statement is located in the binder at Tab 19.
Please.
Good evening, Your Honor.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Harold, H-E-R-A-L-D, Chip Johnson. I am the Chief Officer for the Office of Family and Community Engagement in Education for the Chicago Public Schools. I am responsible for the support and oversight of the space management team, the Office of the Local School Council Relations, Parent University Programs, and the Office of Space Based Initiatives. I have been the Chief Officer since July of 2017. By way of background, I have worked in public education for over twenty years in both educational and administrative capacities. I began my career as a high school teacher, and worked to serve as an elementary school assistant principal, high school associate principal, and the Network Chief of Schools for Chicago Public Schools before becoming Chief Officer for the Office of Family and Community Engagement in Education. I have a master's degree in education from DePaul University, and I'm currently completing my doctoral degree in educational leadership at the National Lewis University. In November of 2013, after serving as Deputy Chief for the Garfield-Humboldt Network, I became the Chief of Schools for Network 6. In that role, I provided support and oversight for schools within my network, including South Loop Elementary School. During my tenure as Network Chief, there have been two long, outstanding educational issues voiced by parents and community members in the near south side: the need for a continuum of high-quality neighborhood school options for all students from pre-K through high school graduation, and the overcrowding of South Loop Elementary School. A new building is being constructed in the South Loop area such that it will have greater capacity to accommodate K through 8 students. The addition of the new building will create approximately 1,200 seats, which would more than accommodate the combined student populations of South Loop and NTA. The addition of the new building will help address overcrowding at South Loop. The proposed reassignment boundary change of NTA helps to address the need for neighborhood high school. High school students in the near south area, which includes Chinatown, Bridgeport, Armour Square, and Brownsville, have very few nearby high school options. Currently, 97% of high school students in the draft enrollment boundaries for the proposed high school choose not to attend their designated neighborhood high school, attending other schools across the city instead. Additionally, 69% of current high school students in the draft enrollment boundaries travel more than three miles to attend a high school of their choice. In response to requests for neighborhood high school, CPS introduced a preliminary framework in May 2017 to expand high-quality neighborhood options from pre-K through high school in the near south area by expanding the boundaries of South Loop and converting NTA to a neighborhood high school. This preliminary framework was designed to address key priorities in the near south community, including providing a continuum of high-quality neighborhood school options for all students from pre-K through high school graduation, as well as building diverse school communities. Throughout this process, CPS has extensively engaged various stakeholders within the near south community, including Alderman Pat Dowell, who represents the near south community. Alderman Pat Dowell formalized her request for the reassignment boundary change and the need for a neighborhood high school in a letter dated July 17, 2017. Alderman Dowell's letter is located in your binder at Tab 21. In the letter, Alderman Dowell recognizes this proposal as the most academically positive option for the near south community. She highlights the fact that while both NTA and South Loop Elementary Schools provide a high-quality education for their students, South Loop has been consistently rated as one of the top elementary schools in the city of Chicago. Thus, the reassignment boundary change would make it possible for all K through 8 students in the area to have the opportunity to enjoy that same academic rigor and access to a new state-of-the-art facility. Alderman further acknowledges the lack of a neighborhood high school in the near south area and the problems it has caused for community residents. This proposal would now make it possible for students to have an easily accessible quality high school option in their community. In addition to this statement from Alderman Dowell, elected officials representing the affected communities have also recommended and urged the Board to pursue a high school option. Specifically, Alderman Danny Solis believes this proposal addresses the need for families in the area, and Alderman Patrick D. Thompson has expressed the need to create a strong neighborhood high school option for students in the ward he represents. The Near South Planning Board also outlined on the need for a neighborhood high school via a letter dated August 25, 2017. For a number of years, the Near South Planning Board voiced concerns regarding the need for a high school in the rapidly growing near south side. On August 23, 2017, CPS representatives presented a framework for a new high school and elementary school to their project review committee. The committee wholeheartedly welcomed the idea of a proposed high school in the near south side as it would enhance their community and give students the much-needed opportunity to receive an education close to home. They also urged CPS to consider extending the boundary of South Loop further south to include the redevelopment of the Harold Ickes Homes, ensuring that children returning or moving into these buildings also have access to South Loop. The CEO's proposal does exactly this, and is in response to this request. The Near South Planning Board subsequently submitted a follow-up letter on January 22, 2018, permitting CPS for proposing to extend the boundaries in response to their request. The Near South Planning Board's letters are located in your binder at Tab 22. Moreover, a request for the proposal in the form of a petition was also presented to the Board of Education added to July 26, 2017 Board Meeting. A copy of the petition, signed by parents and community members of the Dearborn Homes, is located in your binder at Tab 23. The petition urges CPS to convert NTA to a new neighborhood high school. The petition further affirms that the addition of a high school with quality educational opportunities would suit the needs of current and future students. The proposed reassignment boundary change would address this request. In June of 2017, additional requests in support of the proposal were also received via the process outlined in the CEO's guidelines, including 270 letters in support of the proposal signed by members of the Pootac Center in Chinatown. The letters from members of the Pootac Center are located in your binder at Tab 24. Specifically, these letters express support for the proposal to convert the current NTA facility into a neighborhood high school. CPS received feedback in support and against the preliminary framework. As a result of this feedback and in response to the request it received, CPS amended its initial proposal to better serve the community. In particular, CPS focused on creating a more gradual conversion timeline for NTA students so that the majority of existing NTA students could continue their academic careers at NTA as the high school expands. Moreover, based on requests from community members, CPS further adjusted its proposal to expand South Loop's boundaries to incorporate the entirety of NTA's current boundary. As part of this process, CPS formed the Near South Community Leadership Steering Committee, comprised of community leaders, educators, and parents to gather feedback and discuss the transition supports that would be needed to successfully implement this proposal. If this proposal is approved, CPS will continue to engage the steering committee in the implementation phase and in the development of plans for the new high school. If NTA transitions to South Loop, they will be attending a higher-performing school based on the CEO's Guidelines for School Actions. The CEO's Guidelines for School Actions define a higher-performing school as a school that received a higher level on the school quality rating policy, which we refer to as the SQRP, for the 2016-2017 school year. Under the SQRP, located in your tab in your binder, Tab 10, each school receives an annual rating based on its performance on a variety of student outcome measures, including standardized test scores and student attendance. District-wide, schools designated Level 1+ are the highest performing, and schools designated Level 3 are the lowest performing. NTA and South Loop both received a Level 1+ rating based on their performance during the 2016-2017 school year. However, in accordance with the CEO's guidelines, when schools are designated the same rating, the higher-performing school is determined based on a variety of metrics, including multi-year value-added outcomes and standardized test score attainments. While CPS does not calculate district-wide multi-year value-added results anymore, it does, however, compile standardized test score attainments in accordance with the guidelines. South Loop meets the definition of higher-performing school because, according to the most recently available data, it performed higher on the majority of the metrics. Charts summarizing this data are located in your binder also at Tab 25. CPS is committed to supporting the transition of current NTA students through graduation and has budgeted approximately 3.5 million to support this transition. The draft transition plan included within the notice letters to parents, staff, and local school members outlines the various supports that would be offered if this proposal is approved and was developed based on recommendations from the Near South Community Leadership Steering Committee. A summary of this proposal and transition supports is located in your binder at Tab 26. To highlight a few, these supports include: a budget for a variety of events and activities designed to support community building and culture integration; the creation of a joint culture and climate team comprised of staff, parents, and student representatives from NTA and South Loop; principal and school-based transition coordinators to assist with the implementation of new programs and practices; administrative support and other supports identified by both schools' leadership; the implementation of restorative practices; professional development and training opportunities for school staff, and shuttle bus service for NTA students who transition to South Loop Elementary School. In conclusion, the proposed reassignment of NTA's boundary meets the criteria of the Chief Executive Officer's Guidelines for School Actions because it is a proposal requested by parents or community members via the process to request proposals outlined in the guidelines. Specifically, we have heard the request for this proposal from public officials and parents and community members in the form of petitions, emails, and statements at community meetings. This proposal is also consistent with the guidelines because the resulting space utilization after the reassignment boundary change will not exceed the enrollment efficiency range as defined by the CPS space utilization standards. You will hear next from my colleague, James Dispensa, who will provide information regarding the resulting space utilization with respect to this proposal. Thank you, Your Honor, and this concludes my statement.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I would now like to ask permission to call the CEO's next representative, Mr. James Dispensa, who will make a statement in support of the proposal. Mr. Dispensa's statement is located in the binder at Tab 20.
Thank you. Sir, you may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor.
Good evening.
My name is James Dispensa, and I'm the Director of Demographic Analysis and Planning for the Chicago Public Schools. My responsibilities include undertaking school demographic studies, enrollment projections, and the monitoring of space utilization of the public school facilities throughout Chicago. I have been in this position since October 2004. The CEO has asked me to appear at this hearing today to convey to you, the parents, staff, and school community of NTA and South Loop Elementary Schools, as well as interested members of the public in attendance, information relevant to the proposal to reassign the attendance boundaries of NTA. This proposal involves the expansion of South Loop's boundaries to encompass the entirety of NTA's current boundary and gradually converting NTA from an elementary school to a high school. Specifically, the proposal involves the reassignment of NTA students in kindergarten through third grade to South Loop in the 2019-20 school year, while giving students in fourth grade and above the option to remain at NTA through graduation or to transfer to South Loop. The CEO may propose a reassignment boundary change that results in the reassignment of current students from one school to one or more other schools. If the school's principal, parents, or community members have requested that a reassignment boundary change proposal be considered, and the resulting space utilization after the reassignment boundary change will not exceed any affected school's enrollment efficiency range as defined by CPS's space utilization standards. As you've already heard, this proposal is consistent with the CEO's actions, the CEO's Guidelines for School Actions for reassignment boundary changes because it is a proposal formally requested by the members of the community, including parents and community representatives. Moreover, this proposal is consistent with the guidelines because, as I will detail for you, the resulting space utilization after the reassignment boundary change will not exceed the enrollment efficiency range as defined by CPS's space utilization standards. NTA is currently located at 55 West Sirmack Road and serves 723 students in grades kindergarten through eighth in addition to its pre-K program. South Loop serves 780 students in grades kindergarten through eighth in two different facilities known as the South Loop Main Building and the South Loop Branch Building. If the proposed reassignment boundary change is approved, NTA would decrease its grade offering from K through 8 currently to grades four through nine in the 2019-20 school year. Each school year thereafter, NTA would Each school year thereafter, NTA would adjust its grade offering such that by the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year, it would offer only high school grades nine through twelve. And for clarity, Your Honor, I will describe the expected NTA grade offerings in each of the following seven school years should the Board approve this proposal. Next school year, twenty-eighteen-nineteen, NTA would offer grades K through A in addition to its pre-k program, so that's no change from the current school year. In the twenty-nineteen-twenty school year, NTA would offer grades four through nine. In the twenty-twenty-twenty-one school year, NTA would offer grades five through ten. In the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two school year, NTA would offer grades six through eleven. In the twenty-twenty-two-twenty-three school year, NTA would offer grades seven through twelve. In the twenty-three-twenty-four school year, eight through twelve. And then finally, in the twenty-twenty-four-twenty-five school year, NTA would offer grades nine through twelve. Over the summer of twenty-nineteen, the district expects to complete construction of the new South Loop School Building at sixteen-oh-one South Dearborn, which is located approximately one-half mile north of NTA. This one-hundred-twenty-thousand-square-foot, four-story elementary school, together with the current South Loop Building at twelve-twelve South Plymouth and the South Loop Early Childhood Center Branch at nineteen-fifteen South Federal, will accommodate the combined enrollment of the South Loop and those students from NTA who choose to transfer. Again, in the twenty-nineteen-twenty school year, the rising fourth-through-eighth grade students can remain enrolled at NTA through graduation or transfer to South Loop. To understand the enrollment efficiency range of a facility, CPS uses its space utilization standards, which is located in your binder at tab twelve. CPS provides an enrollment efficiency range for elementary schools based primarily on the total number of instructional classrooms available in the facility. There will be a total of sixty-nine classrooms available at the South Loop Elementary Main and Branch Facilities. The ideal capacity of these facilities will be approximately fifteen-ninety, that's one-thousand-five-hundred-ninety students, and any enrollment within the efficiency range of one-thousand-one-hundred-thirteen through seventeen-forty-nine would be considered efficient. The projected enrollment range of South Loop for the twenty-nineteen-twenty school year, should the Board approve this proposal, is between twelve-hundred and fifteen-hundred students, and this projected enrollment range is within the enrollment efficiency range of the new South Loop. Furthermore, the proposed boundary reassignment change will have a positive impact on the racial composition and stability of these schools. The option of maintaining the status quo offers a disadvantage over this proposal, and the projected increase in racial/ethnic diversity of both schools is included in the report at tab twenty-seven. While other alternatives were examined, no alternatives affected the resulting racial/ethnic distribution of students as positively as the proposed reassignment boundary change. Thank you, Your Honor. This concludes my statement.
Thank you.
Your Honor, this concludes the presentation in support of the CEO's proposal. If you have any additional questions, we will be available to answer them. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. No other questions at this time. At this time, we will begin with the public comments. Remember what I said earlier about the fact that I'm going to call three names? The first name will go to the podium for your two minutes. The other, in order that I call you, numbers two and three will line up behind the person at the podium so that we can not lose time, so that we won't lose time between speakers, okay? Having said that, Yvonne Franklin, Francine Washington, and Sheila Garrett. And remember, if you are a student, you cannot put your name on the record. These cards do not indicate, other than one that I've seen, who the students are. So I may call the name of a student. The student will line up like the other speakers. However, once at the podium, students, do not give your name. I'll give you a student designation. Thank you. Please, carry on. Ma'am?
Good evening, Your Honor.
Good evening.
My name is Yvonne Franklin. I'm a guardian of a sixth-grade CPS student. I'm the chairperson of our LSC at Drake-John Drake School. I'm also a representative of sixty-seven community members that gave me permission to represent them, with permission. I'm in favor of the proposal. I think it's a, would be a benefit to the students in general, although my sixth grader may choose another option. Our Board, LSC Board, chose to support this proposal also unanimously. We think it's a, would be a benefit for the students, and respectfully, Your Honor, we would insist that Drake School and Chinatown be included in the proposal going forward. We feel that our students are worthy of such an opportunity, and it's right and good that this proposal be instituted.
Take your time.
I'm sorry. And, and I have had the opportunity to hear public comment from the opposition, and which includes their wish that they be included in the plan going forward, although they do not recommend that this plan be instituted. So, it might not be the majority, but I have frequently heard in private and public that they wish to be guaranteed a seat in the school, so I believe some of them think this is right and good also. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Francine Washington, please? Excuse me. I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon. I am reminded, I'm sorry, Ms. Washington, just step back for a minute. Yeah, just step right back. I'm sorry. Elected officials, we allow them priority in terms of the comments, and is it Alderman? You're with us?
Yes.
Please, if you would be good enough.
Thank you, Francine.
And I apologize to everybody in the audience as well. I made that clear at the beginning that, that we would have elected officials beforehand. Alderman, I apologize to you as well. Please carry on.
Thank you, Your Honor, for giving me time to speak evening about this Near South Educational Plan. As the Alderman of the Third Board, my communities include Bronzeville, Fuller Park, the South Loop, and Washington Park. The needs of my students are as diverse as the Board itself. I've been an Alderman of a portion of the South Loop since two thousand and seven, and in two thousand and fifteen, after the remap, I became the Alderman of a larger portion of the South Loop, stretching from Roosevelt Road to the Stevenson Expressway and beyond. Shortly after officially taking on this expanded area, I began speaking with residents of the area and attending meetings to hear their concerns, the concerns of my new constituents. Consistently, I heard two things from most people I spoke to. Number one, I want to send my children to South Loop Elementary School, but the school is overcrowded, and/or, number two, the community does not have a neighborhood high school, and I can't get my kid in Jones. So in two thousand and fifteen, I began to think about solutions and learned earnestly on these matters. Working with my community and with CPS, the Board is now considering an important improvement to the educational infrastructure in the South Loop neighborhood of my ward. This would include the creation of a new elementary school, which is already under construction, and the establishment of a new neighborhood high school for an area that has not had a true local high school over generations. The two-part proposal, called the Near South Educational Plan, is the only viable option that offers the necessary increase in elementary school seats to deal with the overcrowding in the South Loop, as well as deliver a badly-needed neighborhood high school to the area. To meet these needs, the Neighborhood Teachers Academy Building has been proposed to become the site of the neighborhood high school. As you know, this has become increasingly contentious for the families at NTA. In response to their concerns, the proposal was modified to significantly allow NTA students to stay and graduate from NTA even if they don't live in the boundary, and then go on and attend the new high school with their classmates. A transition team, you heard, has been put in place, made up of parents and community members from NTA and the South Loop, to hash out the important issues regarding the merger of these two schools. These are just a few of the many changes that have been made to the proposal in response to community concerns. But the bottom line is for students who live in the South Loop, regardless of where they live in the South Loop, and regardless of their race or their income, they'll be able to send their student to a high-performing elementary school and have the ability to send them to a high school in their neighborhood where there was not one before. This, Your Honor, is a vast improvement. Also, it writes a wrong from a previous administration that separated the South Loop community at Eighteenth Street, forcing the majority black, low-income students who live in the South Loop into NTA. This was very wrong. Now with this proposal, there will be one school for the entire neighborhood, not separated by racial boundaries, that will provide the highest-quality elementary education for all students, regardless of, as I said before, race, socioeconomic, and other demographic characteristics. To those that say this is a racist plan, I say it is not. This plan will increase both the racial and economic diversity of the consolidated South Loop Elementary School. And for those people who claim that the neighborhood high school is just a grab by rich white people, please look at the boundaries for the high school. The high school will be a majority-minority enrolled school and will be one of CPS's most diverse high schools. This proposal creates a learning environment that benefits all races, all students, all incomes. In two thousand and fifteen, when I started down this path, I told CPS that I wanted a plan that was inclusive of the diverse residents and needs of the South Loop, and this plan could not be a solution for one group over another. This current plan, Your Honor, is fair. I think I will conclude here. I just want to thank everyone from my community who worked hard on this and contributed to these ideas. I want to thank Dr. Janice Jackson, Jim Dispensa, and Chip Hastings. I'm having a bad day. And for their vision and leadership on these issues. And, Your Honor, I thank you for the time that you're going to take to really delve into the issues and hope that you will support this new plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Now then, Francine Washington? Where are you?
Francine.
Did we, did we lose Francine?
No. The high school? It'll be decided.
My name is, uh, thank you, Your Honor, but I should have went before that because I was elected also.
Pardon me?
I was elec-, I'm elected official also. I had to put out petitions, get decided, and get in the campaign. I had twenty-one thousand people vote for me. And then, after being elected, I was also voted by the mayor to be a commissioner, so I'm elected official also.
Well, your time is running, so if you'd be good enough, you spell your first and last name.
Francine Washington. Francine, F-R-A-N-C-I-N-E, Washington, W-A-S-H-I-N-G-T-O-N.
Start her two minutes again from now, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hold on just a sec. There you go.
My name is Francine Washington. I do agree that we need another high school. What I disagree on is the boundaries. Before the NTA got there, there were family public houses on them spots. We had to fight and beg the people to tear the house down in order to be on the NTA because they need a public school. I realize time is far about to change, but the boundaries need to change. Everybody's hollering, "I agree with the boundaries." Nobody have yet stated what the boundaries was like it's a government secret. Can I please have someone tell me what the boundaries are? Because from, from my understanding, it's starting from Twenty-Fourth Street to the north to Loop. I thought the boundaries should start from Thirty-Ninth Street. It is just no boundaries. Kids should be able to go to whatever school they want to go to while we put boundaries on it. Plus, we haven't even built up on the land that's there. By the time we get the high school to get filled up, the people that's come back to the land and land down the street and to the east and to the west of, will have nowhere to go. So I would like, I would like the boundaries to start like at Thirty-Ninth, south at Thirty-Ninth. They don't know from Thirty-Ninth, but they have to cut us in and cut it out. We don't want to sacrifice for the NTA now the upcoming high school.
This is not a question and answer period. This is the time for you to give me your, your comments for the rest of the time.
My problem is, we need to change the boundaries. No one is saying, they talking about the boundaries over and over again. No one actually, they got it in black and white? No one actually told anyone what are the boundaries? Did you hear it? You might have read it, but did you even want to tell what the boundaries were? I know you didn't like it, but now, all I don't know, the boundaries need to start south. It can't start at the Loop, from the Loop to the Loop. From the lake to the, I have, I have, between the boundary talking about now, I actually have over four-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-two constituents that I'm responsible for. Not count, just ahead of households, not counting unit, make over make about twelve-thousand people. I have Bridgeport, Canary, Beale, here you, Iggy's, all the way from, from the lake, all the way over to Sisal, anything in that area from Twenty-Fourth to...
Your time, your time is up. If there's more information, you can submit it by five o'clock tomorrow. Thank you so much for your time here.
Thank you, but I need the boundaries. Still have something, so I need the boundaries.
Sheila Garrett? And before you begin, Ms. Garrett, I'm going to ask Mangene Wiley, James Miller, and Rosemary Garrett to line up, please, and thank you. Go ahead. Please, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sheila Garrett.
Spell your first and last names, please.
Sheila's S-H-E-I-L-A, Garrett, G-A-R-R-E-T-T.
Thank you.
I just want to commend Dr. Jackson and the Board on getting a high school in South Loop. It's been forty-five years since I've been in that area, and there hasn't been a high school. I think the kids deserve to have a quality standard, all the opportunities that they have on the north side at South Loop. They deserve that. And when people get up here to talk about not having a high school in the community, I would tell them, sit down somewhere and worry about the kids. Kids can adapt fast. Older people can't. Teenagers, young parents, they can't adapt. Stop worrying about your children you have not had yet. Worry about the kids that are there, and give them exactly what they need, and that's a top education in high school, in a community where they can be at home, where they know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mangene Wiley?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Aner, A-N-E-R, last name's Wiley, W-I-L-Y-W. I represent public housing, and I was one of the people that supported NTA being built. My thing is, I strongly support the high school. First of all, a school, a building don't make the school. It's the people in there. If these teachers saying they want to teach our kids, show me. Put your money where your mouth at. There's all these grammar school, a new brand-new grammar school being built. What's the problem? If you really interest, really interested, and really strongly want to support teaching our kids and getting them a grade Level One, turn your rear end and go to the new school. I transferred from Haynes School to South Loop to NTA. Guess what? There was no high school. Ask me, what's the percentage of kids of the nationality other than African-American go to Dumba, go to Philip, or go to Tilden? Not, you might have one percent, maybe one percent of the nationality go there. That would change their address and take their kids elsewhere. I raised six kids at Hillier. I raised fifteen grandkids. My granddaughter's first one walked through NTA. I fought hard for NTA. I'm going to fight hard to make it a high school. My kids deserve a good high school. Will they allow their kids to go to Dumba, Philip, or Tilden? I don't think so, because I know this for a fact. Now, how come my kids can't be at Level One High School? Other people came late. We tore our bricks down to build this school. You don't know to swear, my husband died while I supported this school, fighting hard to build NTA. Bricks don't make a school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, All.
James Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is James Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. I'm a South Loop resident and NTA parent. The role of CPS should be to improve education, not property values. The achievement of all students should be the goal. This plan is not trying to achieve that goal. No NTA community involvement... No NTA community involvement was in this plan before May of two thousand sixteen. Alderman Dow did not include us in any of the pre-conversations. This was pushed as a backroom deal by PDNA. A backroom deal bragged about by John Dukoby, PDNA board member, at the first town hall meeting in May. The same man who in two thousand twelve bragged that the SLE scores improved because they re-drew the boundaries and dropped the low-income population from ninety-one percent to thirty-seven percent in a Crane, of, the Cranes article from March two thousand and twelve. This plan was pushed by a small group of property owners to get a temporary price increase, not to improve educational outcomes for children. By removing the low-income children from the test population of neighborhood high school over time, they are trying to improve their property values. A CPS employee who has a personal economic interest that would benefit from the testimony and support of a plan is in violation of the Illinois Ethics Code and for them to be involved in this case. As such, the NTA community calls on James Dispenser to recruit himself from this case, giving his economic interest as a property holder in the region that is projected to realize economic, specifically, real estate appreciation as a result of this proposal. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, sir. Um, we have Rosemary Garrett, and lining up behind her is gonna be William Woodley, Erica Clark, and Scott Clark. Please, thank you. Carry on, ma'am.
My name is Rosemary Garrett, R-O-S-E-M-A-R-Y. Garrett, G-A-R-R-E-T-T. I always say like the popcorns.
There you go. Making me hungry.
Um, I would like to just urge all of the decision-makers in this process to please use your right reasoning and good governance. Because what has gone on prior to this meeting has been a lot of hate. Someone who actually put out a flyer that encouraged the Hunger Games for the people who supported this project, which I don't think is a value any school wants. And I agree with the previous speakers that it's not the building, it's not the block, it's the people inside that make a school great. I actually was a certified Chicago public school teacher a million years ago. I substituted for the first couple of months when I graduated from Chicago Teachers College, and I saw that it's the people inside the building that make a school great. And I applaud the parents on both sides of this issue who want the best education for their kids. I've lived in the Bronzeville area since nineteen ninety-nine. I am not a racist, but I think that the school, the high school, is needed in this community, and it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Uh, is it William Woodley?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, got it.
Uh, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity, your honor.
Would you spell your last name, sir, please?
Yep. My name's Will Woodley. Last name's W-O-O-D-L-E-Y.
Thank you.
I'm the Development Director for the Community Builders Chicago office. We are a nonprofit committed, committed to helping create and support mixed-income communities. Personally, I'm also the father of two small children and in myself trying to figure out how to get them in the, uh, how to get them the best education possible as they grow up in Chicago. So I understand that tonight's topic is both challenging and emotionally charged. Because I believe it will benefit thousands of children in the long run, particularly those from disadvantaged, lower-income families, I am here to speak in support of the CPS proposal. The Community Builders' mission is to help build and sustain communities where people of all incomes can achieve their full potential. Providing access to the highest quality education possible is a key goal for our work. We are the developer of Oakwood Shores in Bronzeville, where for fifteen years we have helped to create a high-quality, mixed-income neighborhood. We now will be doing the same as the developer for the remaining vacant blocks of the former Harold Ickies Homes, which are just east of NTA. There we will help build a mixed-income neighborhood that includes hundreds of homes for CHA families and other families with lower incomes. A top priority will be securing access to educational and economic opportunity for those families. The work the Community Builders has done for decades across the country and in Chicago informs us that, uh, informs us on the importance of providing quality neighborhood schools and embracing diversity in order to build strong mixed-income communities. CPS's current proposal will give the families we directly serve, as well those, as well as hundreds of others, access to high-quality public education, uh, public education, pre-K through high school, and what will be one of the most diverse student populations in the city.
Sir, I'm gonna have to ask you to...
Yep.
Uh, your time is up. Submit it, um, by tomorrow at five o'clock. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Erica Clark?
Hi, my name's Erica Clark. Uh, I'm with a group called Parents, The Teachers, The Citywide...
Please spell your last name.
Erica Clark, C-L-A-R-K.
Thank you.
With Parents, The Teachers, a citywide parent group. Um, we're here to talk about why we believe the proposed action for NTA does not meet the law or CPS's own school action guidelines, which we believe is, what your job is here tonight is to look at the evidence, consider it all, and write a recommendation as to whether or not the proposal meets, meets those guidelines. We believe that the facts tonight will show that, that it doesn't, and that you should recommend against this proposal. First of all, it's not a boundary change, okay? Think about it this way. Um, if this proposal goes through, NTA will close. It will still be a school, but it will not be an elementary school. If you go home, if you stop at Aldi's on your way home tonight and if you buy groceries, and then you go back to Aldi's next week to pick something up, and it's a Target or a Payless, it's still a store, but it's not a grocery store. Aldi's has been closed. NTA is being closed with this proposal. And as such, you should consider the, uh, the guidelines for school closings, not a boundary change. So what does the school closing guidelines say? They say that first of all, the students need to go to a higher-performing school. Now, despite Mr. Johnson's mental gymnastics here, NTA has the highest level a school can achieve. It's a Level One-plus school. There's no higher rating. South Loop is a great school. It has the same rating, but it's not significantly better than NTA. So it, it, this proposed action fails to meet that guideline. Um, the second question is, is this a community-supported proposal? When CPS announced these plans, they said they were only gonna consider uh, at, school actions that were supported by the community. There is a, a tab on the CPS website that says, "Community-generated proposals." NTA is not listed as one of them. I think you're gonna hear tonight that the NTA community, the parents, the staff, and the students at that school are opposed to this plan. They did not generate this plan. They do not want this plan. And as such, that is the community that should take center stage and whose voices should...
Thank you. I'm gonna have to ask you to submit whatever you'd like by five o'clock tomorrow. Thank you very much. The next three speakers, if you'd line up, please. Tanya? Is it Skelton? And, um, Anisha? Uh, Foreman? And Amara Enya? And I apologize upfront for anybody's name who I mispronounced. I really do. Sir, carry on, please.
Good evening, your honor. My name is Scott Clark, S-C-O-T-T, C-L-A-R-K.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of the South Loop, sent in for almost eighteen years now. I have twin girls that are currently in seventh grade at a CPS school and, uh, living in the neighborhood, having children, going through the process. Um, we've been, we've seen dozens of our friends' families move out, primarily because of the lack of educational opportunities. I understand it's difficult transition for the folks that are at NTA now, but myself, my wife, and a lot of our neighbors strongly support this. Uh, converting the NTA, the, the trends, the amended transition plan, I think will be helpful. Um, CPS is known for years with the growth in the South Loop, we're gonna need a neighborhood high school. And, um, the current plan is not perfect. And, uh, I'm, I'm sure it's, and I've, I've been to several of the community meetings, and I know the NTA supporters are very loud and very vocal, but at the end of the day, the greater good of the community, I think, outweighs, uh, the emotional attachment that they have to their school. And we strongly, and as much, hopefully, my daughters, uh, will be able to attend there as freshmen in two thousand and nineteen. And, um, it's not perfect, but as Abraham Lincoln reportedly said, a, a good settlement or a good resolution is when everybody walks away a little unhappy. Uh, we're not, it's not the best solution, but I think it's the only solution that makes sense at this time going forward. We strongly support it. I think the diversity that the, uh, proposed boundaries and transition will allow, will, uh, provide greater, greater educational opportunities for all of the children currently in the neighborhood and in the future, particularly given the growth of the South Loop community. So we would strongly support, uh, the proposal. We applaud the Alderman's support of it and the other community, uh, leaders who do support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come forward. Anisha, is it?
No, it's Tanya.
Oh. You, Tanya, yes, I beg your pardon, yes. Indeed. Carry on.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Skelton, T-A-N-Y-A, Skelton, S-K-E-L-T-O-N. I am a parent at NTA. I am here to stand with NTA. I oppose the plan to close NTA. My son is a first grader in the neighborhood program as we live in the Boundary. He loves his school. He loves his friends. He loves learning and is excited every day to be at school. The culture of the school is amazing. My husband and I consciously decided to send our son to a majority-black school that is in line with our values and feel diversity is important. We have not been disappointed. I told my son I would be talking tonight to save his school. I asked him if there was anything he wanted me to say. His response, "Go NTA." Several friends that are at South Loop Elementary, I should say, several parents of South Loop Elementary kids are against this proposal. Many NTA families, or most of us, are against this proposal. Who is for this plan? You should strongly consider other options. There has to be a better plan. There is a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is this Anisha? No, maybe I mispron- is it, um, Anisha Cruthers Foreman? Okay, we'll put that aside. And you are Amara Enya? All right, I'm gonna give three more names then. Um, can I give an address? Would you be offended if I give an address? Well, I'm gonna take that as a no then. It looks here like A-N-M-I-S-A. Let's see who it is. Would you, thank you so much. Let's carry on with you, ma'am. You are Amara?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Amara Enya, A-M-A-R-A-E-N-Y-I-A. I am a resident and organizer. On my background, I have a master's degree in education, a law degree, and a PhD in education policy. For context for this conversation, um, I've had the privilege of working with community groups that have experienced a lot of the systematic destabilization and disruption that often occurs and affects the most marginalized communities of this city. I was also one of the premier, uh, primary consultants on the Agden Jenner merger, which is, is being executed as we speak. So it's another example of communities who are grappling with what to do in transformative spaces and how we can talk about issues of diversity and equity and so on and so forth. I'm here representing a group of colleagues, both professionally but also in the community, who were tasked with serving on an equity committee to assess this proposal, not just through the lens of diversity, but through the lens of equity, which is absolutely important, especially when we're considering groups that have historically been marginalized with school actions have been taken. This group has met repeatedly and also engaged in conversations with community members. And a few of the points that we just wanted to highlight in this proposal is that, number one, as a matter of policy and practice, we must counter any policy decision-making that undercuts quality schools. And more specifically, black and brown spaces should never be expendable. And yet, all too often, they are. Again, this issue of equity. This group is tasked with thinking creatively about how we leverage existing resources and what kinds of investments we can make that will mitigate the disruptive factors that are at play whenever a school action, such as a closing in this case, occurs. And so, after deliberation and conversations with the community, we have developed a proposal that assesses the current landscape and the current proposal, but also puts on the table an alternative that requires in, investments in, uh, existing high schools in the area, in particular, Dunnbar High School.
I have to, and I have to ask you to, your time is up, and we have ninety more people to go. So if you'd be good enough, submit it before five o'clock tomorrow.
The proposal has been submitted.
Thank you so much. All right, and then I'm gonna call, it looks like Wendy Millen?
Wendy Millen.
Miller, I beg your pardon. Ruby Miller and Pearl Miller. Would you please say your name and spell your first, middle, and last name, please?
A-N-I-K-A, Anika, last name Matthews hyphen Feldman, Matthews, M-A-T-T-H-W-S, hyphen Feldman, F-E-L-D, M-A-N. I am a NTA supporter. I'm against the plan. The plan assumes many things. It assumes that CPS is obligated to give a third high school in South Loop. Regardless of the testimony you've heard, there is a neighborhood high school already assigned to the area. That is Phillips. Phillips has one thousand one hundred and thirty-four seats that are available right now. CPS has claimed that this is not a high-quality school. However, it is sending Inglewood kids, if their closures go through, to Phillips. If it's good enough for Phillips, it's, it's, if it's good enough for the Inglewood kids, it should be good enough for South Loop Elementary families. And again, one thousand one hundred and thirty-four seats are available right now. Also, we have Prospectus. Prospectus is a charter school, but it also receives funding from CPS. They can add a neighborhood component to this school like they do Jones Prep. Again, that's many seats that could be available right now. Also, integration. We have heard a lot about how this plan is about bringing diversity and integration. However, Dr. Jackson has said in a board meeting that some of NTA classrooms are black, and that is a problem. However, in the district, there are two hundred and seventy-eight schools that are all black. They are not a problem for CPS. They're not doing anything about them. They're just calling out NTA for being majority-black. That is a problem. Also, what community has this matrix? What community has an elementary school, uh, elementary kids sharing space with high school kids? That is not done. There's a difference in their development as well as their behavior. That's why it's not done. CPS hasn't even shown us where this is done in the district currently, having elementary kids share space with high school kids. That is against the best interests of any NTA, um, the NTA community in any community housing elementary kids. That's why it's not done.
Thank you. Um, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Sure. I also already have my packet ready to submit to you.
Um, are you able to accept that or no? Okay, thank you very much. Wendy Miller?
Good evening.
Hi there. Uh, Wendy Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. CPS proposal is not one of a boundary reassignment. It is the forced closure of a top-rate of school that is doing everything right for our children. This proposal will ruin the educational continuity of over seven hundred elementary school children. Expecting NTA families to sacrifice their school for the benefit of other communities is inconsiderate. The needs of one community are not more important than the needs of another. There is no way to recreate or preserve the family and community we have been at NTA, a culture that knows its students, families, and all of their backgrounds. If our children are moved to an eighteen-hundred-student, rebuilding elementary school campus, they will suffer. I have had children at both South Loop Elementary and NTA. We left South Loop Elementary because the attitude of the administration and staff did not reflect the values I expect my children to learn well from. My child was overlooked in the classroom. NTA staff knows my children and the rest of our children beyond the classroom, and this knowledge helps our school provide our students with a great education. We take care of our families, and all children are valued equally. Students are empowered to speak with their own strong, confident voice. NTA ignites momentum. We are building future leaders that are culturally aware and strive for a just society, which we need. NTA is special in a way that should be a beacon in CPS for families that need a better school opportunity. This proposal sacrifices a very special, very unique community to create the city's largest elementary school and disperses kids to a giant three-building campus. This proposal is not the best CPS can do for our, all of our communities. They avoided in, input from NTA even before they made their plan public, and they should reassess this plan because there are better options that the larger community could put forth.
Thank you. Uh, do we have students now? Um, do we have, ma'am?
Yes.
You were done? Do we have students in front of us?
Yes.
Whose name begins with an R, first name begins with an R? Okay. Student, you're Student A. Would you please begin, please, Student A?
I'm sorry, I'm finding hers.
Do I need to pass, or do you have?
Since two thousand thirteen, my mom and other parents have added to the school gardens. Gardening at, at NTA is done by parents and teachers. We get to go out of the classroom and learn about growing and harvesting vegetables that we love to. Some of our... Some of our classrooms learn how to make compost and plant seedings and raise beds that we built with our classrooms. Two of our teachers took a training class in order for us to pick and serve our vegetables in the cafeteria. This past fall, the little kids have picked parsley, carrots, kale, and Swiss chard to have in our school lunch. One of our moms is a master gardener. We know, she knows a lot about growing plants and helps kids who haven't planted anything before. We have volunteers who help with classrooms when they plant plants and pick vegetables too. My mom helps with that. Over the summer, we help take care of the gardens, and families can come to pick vegetables. Two years ago, we planted a pine garden to help.
Thank you very much, student A. Are we on student B now?
NTA used to have a full-time librarian, but that teacher left a few years ago. When I came to school, some parents decided to try to reopen the children's library. One of our moms organized volunteers from the school to reorganize books, update old books, and organize the furniture. She also spent a lot of time researching the computer equipment needed to set up the libraries so that the children could check out books. We also have had book fairs. Our parents have helped our teachers by buying books at the fair from a wish list. The library is awesome, because kids get to meet people in our community. Our neighbors at Queen Chapel, the oldest African-American church in Chicago, is near NTA. I got to visit Queen Chapel on a field trip. The men of Queen came to NTA to read, to read books to the little kids. That way they get to know our neighbors. They are looking at opening the bigger kids' libraries that I will be able to check books out, too.
I complete the statement. Thank you so very much, student B. Appreciate it. Tina Felstein, Catherine McKenzie, Paul Kent, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Tina Felstein. That's T-I-N-A, last name up is in Frank, E-L-D-S-T-E-I-N. I'm here today representing one of the most active community organizations in the near south side, the South Loops, called the Prairie District Neighborhood Alliance. I'm the president and founding member. Our board unanimously supports this plan. This conversation didn't start in 2017 or 16 or 15. This conversation about how are we gonna address the needs of our community, the education needs, started back when our organization was founded in 2006. We host a lot of very large events for our community, and back in 2007, our events would typically have maybe 25 children attend. Those same events annually each year now are attracting thousands of families, thousands. We can't even fit the number of people that want to participate in our community. Now, we have seen over the years the overcrowding of South Loop Elementary School, and we have consistently seen the families of our community leave our community because there is no viable opportunity for them. They don't wanna go to an overcrowded school, and they know they're gonna be facing high school. Now, when we started back in 2006, most of the children were, you know, three, four, five, six years old. We have now seen all those children become high school students, and many of the parents cannot afford to go to private schools and/or are able to get into many of the selective enrollment schools. May I add that Jones is a school that our tax dollars paid for, and many of the students in our area can't even get into that school.
I'm gonna have to ask you to please submit whatever else you'd like.
We are 100% supportive of this plan.
Thank you so much. Catherine?
Yes, McKechnie.
McKenzie, and I'm gonna ask-
McKechnie.
Okay, you'll correct me, just a second. And I'm gonna ask Autumn Laidler to line up, please. Thank you, go ahead, ma'am. I apologize for mispronunciation. Carry on.
Good evening. My name is Catherine McKechnie. I am a South Loop mom currently serving on the Phillips Academy LSC. Tonight, I want to talk about CPS's investment in Phillips, Tilden, and Dunbar. At its June 20th meeting, CPS provided handouts detailing a combined $555 million investment in these three schools since the year 2000. Since the financial analyst in me loves a challenge, I decided I would dig into whatever numbers I could find on the CPS website. This is what I discovered. Since 2006, CPS has invested $34.7 million in these three schools combined, not the $55 million detailed in the handouts. Of the $34.7 million spent, Phillips received a little over $900,000. That is the neighborhood South Loop school. $722,000 was spent on a district-wide initiative to bring air conditioning to all classrooms. CPS has invested a paltry $188,000 in Phillips, mainly spent on operations and maintenance. Dunbar received a $32 million investment, including nearly $4 million for IT educational programs and other projects. Dunbar, however, is not a neighborhood school. This follows the district's typical pattern of investing heavily in selective enrollment high schools like nearby Jones and other non-neighborhood schools. On the north side, we can find true neighborhood investment, $19 million in Taft and $32 million in Lincoln Park. Converting NTA to a high school further the trend of disinvesting in neighborhood high schools, especially those in predominantly black and low-income areas of Chicago. The South Loop is one of the few racially integrated neighborhoods in Chicago. If CPS chooses to truly invest in Phillips like it has in Lincoln Park or Taft, we could create a high school with a racially and economically diverse student population. If the board chooses to move forward with its plan to convert NTA, it will signal loud and clear what has been whispered for years.
Thank you very much. Please submit anything else by tomorrow. Mr. Kent, you're up, and Lisa, please. I have a card just with Lisa, so Lisa, get in line if you will. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Dr. Paul Kent, P-A-U-L-K-E-N-T. I'm a pediatrician at Rush University Medical Center. My background is in physics and math at Harvard and then Mayo Clinic, University of Chicago, Lurie Children's Hospital. My wife's also a pediatrician, and she is head of, one of the two medical directors for Department of Children and Family Services. I have no dog in this fight. I'm not from Chicago, I'm not from NTA. My children live, and we live, and we're forced because we can. We're rich enough to move, to make a choice, and get the best schools we possibly can. We're not, we're able to have our own neighborhood school that is outstanding. I wanted to correct a couple misconceptions here. My wife and I, as I said, are both experts in the field of child welfare. She, in fact, is head of Child Protective Services and probably will be for the state of Illinois shortly. The first is that adverse childhood experiences, the harms that are done to children by psychological, emotional displacement. A previous person said kids can adapt better than adults. That is 100% wrong. The harms that children face, especially psychological harms, increase the risk by threefold. Carrying a weapon, using alcohol, sexual activity, it lowers your IQ by about 10 points. The children behind me are all smoking a pack of cigarettes a day. That's actually not true, but if they lose the type of educational advantage they have, it will be the equivalent of one pack of cigarettes a day. That is the harm that is being chosen to inflict on these children to the benefit of someone else. My child, African-American, DCFS, drug-exposed, HIV-positive at birth, went from 1 percentile to the 70th, I'm sorry, excuse me, to the 27th percentile in reading, because I'm at an outstanding school. If you look at the equity analysis, you'll see black male children, like my son Isaiah, went from 17th percentile to 56th percentile, equivalent to the white children.
Sir, I'm gonna have to ask you, please submit your-
I will submit the rest, but I would like to-
Thank you, thank you so much. I have over eighty more people.
Thank you for your thoughtful attention. I'd like to submit some of the medical research in these areas so you can be familiar with it, please.
Thank you very much. Ms. Laidler, and I'm going to ask David, is it Wu? To line up, please. Thank you, go ahead.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the teachers and staff at National Teachers Academy. I'm here because the consequences to our children are greater than any consequence that any one of us could face by standing up and speaking out. So what is happening inside NTA is most important. NTA is not an asset, it is not a location. It is students, families, and staff. The true asset of NTA is the members of this thriving community. As teachers and staff, we know Black Lives Matter, we teach our children to stand up to injustice, and we listen to families. Through their educational and life experience, our students have faced down adversity and achieved in the classroom and out. Our entire class last year in 2017 was accepted at Level 1 Plus and Level 1 schools of their choice. NTA is a promise that was made to our community by the city. CPS is breaking a promise to families and hundreds of students already displaced who have remained committed to NTA and will be displaced again if NTA is broken apart. We have worked to create a purposely integrated school within our building and community. CPS has said in the proposed plan is to integrate our schools. Intention is not action. This is an issue not just of race but of race and class. It is systemic. To quote Hanyi Seikot, "The point of this language of intention and personal responsibility is broad exoneration. Mistakes were made, bodies were broken, people were enslaved. We meant well, we tried our best. Good intention is the hall pass through history. We refuse to let our children be the victims of good intentions which result in these harmful outcomes. Our children are not disposable. Their education matters, their bodies matter, their Black Lives matter. NTA is a Level 1 Plus school with 75% African-American students that are 70%-
Thank you so much. I'm gonna have to, ma'am, excuse me, I'm gonna have to ask you, please, submit it by tomorrow.
If this were a Level 1 Plus white school, would this proposal be up? Thank you.
Lisa? And I'm gonna ask Charles Riffenberg, get in line, please. Go ahead, please.
Lisa, L-I-S-A, Riffenberg, R-I-F-F-E-N-B-U-R-G. I am an educator at NTA. I received my bachelor's from Yale University and my master's in elementary education from Northwestern. I've been a teaching artist, administrator, and educator in three public school systems. So many of my students, the parents that I work with, have come up here since the beginning in June, and they have stood up because they have integrity, one of our core values at NTA, that we do the right thing always, except I have never come up and spoken before, and if I teach them all of the time just by my words, it's not enough. So that's why I'm standing up today to talk with you. I'm teaching them by example. I wish you could see NTA. NTA is the most magical place. I have worked at many CPS schools all over the city, and NTA is hands-down the best that I have ever worked at. Any fellow teachers in the city, they ask you where you work, I say, "NTA," they go, "Ooh, NTA," because, as I said, it's the best. It's a home, it's a haven, it's a place of brilliant teachers, the hardest-working in the city, specifically because of the students that we serve. There's been a lot of discussion about academic rigor that is supposedly not at NTA, and I take personal offense to that. My 12-hour, 13, 14-hour days for the past four years at NTA? My students are experiencing an academically rigorous education where they are learning many grade levels above where they are, because of them, because of their parents, and because of me. Students are not just standardized test scores. Students at NTA receive the arts, they receive social-emotional education, and they receive needed services.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wu, and then, is it Cybil Hay, please? Go ahead, sir.
My name is David Wu, the last name's W-U. I work for an organization that offers ESL classes to Chinese immigrants in Chinatown. Because these immigrants can't speak English, don't have college education, and have limited job skills, almost all work in Chinese restaurants. These immigrants, Mr. Moi, Mrs. Lee, Mr. Chan, leave Chinatown around 10:00 in the morning and get home around 10:00 at night. Some work as far as Germany, Aurora, Northwest Indiana. They do this six days a week. They came to the United States so that their children and not themselves can have a better life. They hope that through education, the lives of their children can be better. For decades, some Chinatown families, 40, 50 years ago, immigrants in Chinatown have worried about where their children will go for high school. My wife's family immigrated when she was in elementary school after being held back so that she can improve her English. My wife and her older sister went to Lindlum. Her parents never went to Lindlum until graduation day, partially because it was far, partially because they worked so many long hours. It was their wish that their children could go to a high school closer, and it is the same wish that immigrant families in Chinatown have today. I support the conversion of the NTA into a high school as it finally provides a nearby high school for Chinatown, especially children of recent immigrants that won't get into selective enrollment schools. But this high school also serves the growing needs of those living in South Loop and North Brownsville. I'd like to submit and to record letters from over 250 adult ESL students who support a high school but can't attend tonight because they're working tonight even after the hearing is over to provide for their families.
Thank you very much. Mr. Riffenberg, and would Bernie Wong, please, get in line? Go ahead, sir.
Charles Riffenberg, R-I-F-F-N-B-U-R-G. For the past four years, I have seen the amazing work that is done at NTA, and I've been coming to many of these meetings. I've followed this entire process, and I've seen this false choice that's put before the neighborhood of, "You can either have a high school or you can't." It has been shown that the amount of money that CPS has put in all of these proposals that they could build a high school if they wanted to without destroying the amazing community at NTA, but they have chosen not to do that. I grew up in a small community, I went to small schools, and I can tell you that a small school like NTA serves its students' needs better than a 1,500 to 2,000-student school ever could. Students will get lost in a three-building campus, but when you have a campus where such amazing personal attention is given to every child like it is at NTA, you can't replicate that. The community is not just the building, but by destroying NTA, you are destroying that community and all of the good that goes with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would Leonard James, is it Breke?
Brock.
Brock, excuse me, would you be able to get in line? Go ahead, please, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Cybil Wong.
Will you spell your, spell your name, please?
Cybil, C-Y-B-A-L-W-O-N-G. And I am the parents of the free CPS alumni. I also is, I come from an immigrant parent, too. And I have worked with organizations and also the churches that serve the immigrant youth and children. And I understand how difficult they have to go through to find a high school. And also, I have three letters come from the high school kid that they wrote, because they are all at home studying for the final exam, because they start their final tomorrow for the semester. And one letter, the student that attended Kelly High School, she arrived in this country last year, October 2017. She, she wanted a high school and elementary school near her house, because there are many people living in Chinatown and around it. So we have a close high school to Chinatown. It's a good idea for many students, it's a short way to go to school. Student B said also, he went to a high elementary school, currently attends Ling Tech High School. It's very far away, so she really loved to have a high school around Chinatown, so it's more convenient and save time and less time for traveling, so she can have more time to study. The student-
Ma'am, I'm gonna have to thank you for your, for your time here tonight. Your time is up. Elizabeth, Elizabeth Greer, would you get in line, please? Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Bernie Wong, B-E-R-N-I-E, last name W-O-N-G. I'm a social worker by background, and early last year, I retired as a- I’m a social worker by background, and early last year, I retired as a founder and CEO of Chinese-American Service League. I have held this position for the last thirty-nine years. I’m also a proud parent and grandparent of CPS. In the past months, we have heard many, many testimony as to the urgent need for a good high school, neighborhood high school. This is substantiated by the Chinatown Vision Plan developed by the Coalition for Better Chinese-American Community in collaboration with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency and Alderman’s List. I just want to share with you what I personally have observed in the last forty years. Over and over again, I watch the pain and worries of our parents. The children had to change multiple buses, often in the dark early hours and heavy snow so that they could get to a better education than the one assigned in the neighborhood. Every parent wants the best education for his or her children or child, including all the parents in this room, whether they are opposed or for a high school. I can understand how they feel. This is challenging situation, but as someone who is seen as a longtime activist in my community, I can’t forget the many pleas of the thousands of parents in our community over the past four decades for a logical high school in our area. After so many months for a hearing and fact-finding, we can come up with a viable, I hope CPS can come up with a viable plan for our children, that is, create a vibrant ath- ath- ath-ically and economically diverse high school. And I also hope that they will look for a long-term solution for the high school besides their creating of the NTA.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth Von Omsdorf, get in line, please. Sir, you’re up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leonard James Brock. I’ve listened to everything that’s been...
Would you be good enough to spell your last name, please?
My last name is spelled B-R-O-C-K.
Thank you, carry on.
And I was listening to everything that was being said, so I was wondering what I could say that could be applicable in domain to what’s everything that’s going on and something that’s comprehensible. I respect and applaud the advancement and performance of the high schools that’s going on with the high school students and all that, and that’s very vital. Education is very vital, you know? But I think another thing that should be taken into great consideration, because I’m in support of the NTA organization, and I believe that we should be considered as what’s gonna be bestowed upon the young children and also the parents, and displacement that’s gonna be put on them, to have this taking place, you know what I’m saying? We should consider all that. And, you know, from a religious perspective, the Bible says, “To whom much is given, much is required,” so I think the older kids can probably take on more responsibility, but to put children under that strain and then their parents when they’re working could create, you know, extreme hardship, so that should be considered.
Thank you very much. And will Be- is it Beatrice Frosto Sandival? Would you be good enough to get in line? Go ahead, please.
Elizabeth Greer, E-L-I-S-A-B-E-T-H-G-R-E-E-R. I’m the chair of the local school council of NTA, very strongly against this proposal. I’m here to speak on the record about the Near South Steering Committee. Initially, I was sent an email by Pedro Soto, Dr. Janice Jackson’s chief of staff, requesting the names of three people who I would recommend serve on the committee. Our principal, Mr. Isaac Costas, and the executive director of Chicago United for Equity, Nikita Brar, were also asked for three names each. Ultimately, no one from my list or from Nikita’s list were chosen, and only one person Mr. Costas recommended was on the committee. Additionally, out of the four people chosen by CPS to represent NTA, two of the names on the list were not immediately recognized by Mr. Costas or myself. We eventually discovered that they were NTA parents, but neither were actively involved in the fight to save our school. How did their names end up on the list? Both parents told me that they didn’t know. Someone from CPS called them and asked them to be on the committee. Neither of these parents attended any of the Near South Steering Committee meetings, effectively whittling down NTA’s representation to two people. Conversely, South Loop Elementary was represented by four actively engaged members, including two LSC members and one member of their space planning committee. NTA was at a distinct disadvantage, and this disadvantage continued as I discovered that in several instances, my email address was left off of CPS’s vital communications about the committee, and a meeting was even convened without my knowledge. I also want to be clear that the agendas of all the meetings focused on what to do when the proposal was enacted. We were not tasked to determine whether or not the proposal should be enacted. On a different note, I want to urge that this plan not be carried through on the basis that CPS is proposing to create a two-thousand-seat, three-building, one-administration Franken school. There is no academic evidence that larger schools are good for children, and in fact, all evidence points to the contrary. The new South Loop Elementary School will be the largest within CPS, and as such, it would probably struggle in maintaining academic outcomes for students, and it will drop from its coveted Level One Plus rating. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will Kate Glassing get in line, please? Go ahead, ma’am.
Elizabeth Van Opshtao. Your Honor, I am a NTA mother and a pediatrician. Where I teach both ethics and evidence-based medicine. Let me state this simply: I think this plan is not evidence-based, and I do not think it is moral. It furthers patterns of racism and class- classism that favors some and not others. First, we prevent, we have presented tons of evidence against the plan. The detriment to education for both NTA and South Loop kids when you create massive elementary, there’s evidence behind that. The importance of breaking down data into fair comparisons, and I don’t think that CPS is accurately giving you information when we’ve had independent people look at test score data, there are major discrepancies. And we’ve talked about the health effects and even mortality effects of adverse childhood events. But more importantly, to the core of my being, I think this plan is morally wrong, and it breaks, do not harm, as a principle. Many of our kids have been displaced multiple times. First, there were the promises of the Ickies being told that this would be their school forever, and then that was taken away. Then there were Long Grove and Hilliards kids getting kicked out of South Loop Elementary and their borders being redrawn. And then later, when South Loop was overcrowded, they wanted to have a school within the school at NTA rather than making the boundaries different then. So, I ask, how is this equitable? Another thing is the community meetings. They say they have community engagement, but what does that mean? It’s not the NTA community. When you go to the community engagement meetings, they don’t tell you the history of the racism and the displacement that has affected these kids. And so it’s not fair to say that it’s, that they’re offering something new when these kids in these other communities have nothing to lose. That’s not a fair choice. It’s like offering medicine and making people struggle for the choices that are available when the NTA already belongs to a fam- to a family, and it’s a cruel thing which does not value equity.
Thank you so much. Would Candice Moore, please, get in line?
I wanted to submit, I also have video testimonials from families, thank you.
Please carry on, your name.
Yes, Beatrice Frosto Sandival, B-E-A-T-R-I-Z-F-R-A-U-S-T-O hyphen S-A-N-D-O-V-A-L. I’m a parent of a child at NTA, and I am opposed to the plan to convert to a high school, which is in essence a closure plan, as other parents and supporters and opponents have stated tonight. And I think we’ve heard of many very valuable arguments tonight as far as why this plan is not in the best interest of any of the students involved, whether they are students from NTA or the students from the neighboring communities where, yes, a high school is, a quality high school is needed. I agree that Chinatown, Bridgeport, Armored Square, and Brownsville need a high school. Everybody needs a good high school, but there is, as other people have said, over a thousand seats in Phillips and very little investment in Phillips to date. Because I am also an attorney, I just need to refute some of the things that have been said tonight by the people from the Board of Ed and the Aldermen regarding diverse school communities. NTA is an extremely diverse school community. Pat Dolls stated that the most academically positive option is this merger of NTA and South Loop Academy, which we have already stated will result in a three-building campus of over two thousand seats. And the research bears out that larger schools are not, are not a positive thing for learning. The gradual conversion that CPS Board proposes as a way to ameliorate the effects of this plan really doesn’t eliminate the problem that this is gonna create a mega school, this is going to create displacement of our students, many of which have already been displaced several times as we’ve stated, and that it is going to destroy the community of NTA. People have said, come up here and said that a school is not the bricks, and that is right. A school is the people. But if you take these people out of the schools, we will not have our principal, we will not have...
Thank you so much, ma’am, I’m gonna have to ask you, excuse me, I’m gonna have to ask you to submit anything else you’d like to say if you’d like to. Nikita Brar, if you’d get in line, please? Carry on, ma’am.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Kate Glassing, G-L-A-D-S-O-N. I’m from the Legal Assistance Foundation, and I’m here with Candice Moore from Chicago Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights. We’re here on behalf of concerned parents of NTA and Chicago United for Equity to speak against this proposal. We’ve prepared a written statement which we will be submitting for your review, and Candice and I will summarize it now. In order for the Board of Education to approve any school action, CPS must prove that its proposal complies with Illinois law and complies with its own guidelines. In this case, CPS’s proposal fails to comply with both. Turning first to the law, CPS’s proposal violates Illinois law in at least four separate ways. First of all, its proposal includes both a boundary change and a phase-out, so the gradual cessation of grading in NTA’s elementary school. CPS’s proposal includes both of these actions, yet CPS’s guidelines fail to include any criteria for a phase-out this year. Without criteria for a phase-out, the CEO cannot per- permissively propose a phase-out, and the Board of Education cannot approve a phase-out. Second, CPS must provide students with an opportunity to attend a higher-performing school after school action. In this case, NTA will not have that opportunity. NTA and South Loop Elementary are both Level One Plus schools. Third, the transition plan that CPS has generated fails to commit specific resources to provide NTA students with a comparable level of support services after this action. Specifically, this transition plan fails to address how students will receive additional support for the loss of their health, school-based health center, and for the community center on-site, and for their free extracurricular activities. Lastly, CPS fails to include the NTA community in arriving at this decision, which also violates the law. Turning to the guidelines, this request did not come from NTA parents, principal, or community. Therefore, it fails to meet the guidelines. Additionally, there has not...
Thank you very much. Jessica Schneider, if you’d get in line, please? Ms. Moore, carry on, please.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Candace Moore, C-A-N-D-A-C-E, Moore, M-O-O-R-E, and I’m from the Chicago Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights. Following Kate’s comments, I want to make a few additional points. The first point is that it’s important that the full scope of community feedback and comments be considered. Many students, parents, and community members made time to come out and speak out, hoping that this time, unlike so many others, would be a real moment when the power could be at CPS, at CPS would actually listen to them. This is why we are formally requesting that, Your Honor, rely strictly on the transcripts of the community meetings and not the summaries of the meetings. In reviewing the summaries, we found a number of inconsistencies that we have documented in our requests, and I’ll submit that, that make them wholly unreliable. Additionally, as you consider the best interest of the communities at issue, I want to make a couple of points. One, NTA is a resource. Beyond its academic excellence, it offers a number of different community benefits. It has a USC health clinic that provides healthcare services to students and community members, including uninsured and underinsured families. It has a wonderful partnership with the Chicago Park District, which offers recreational programs including swimming, affordable childcare. Additionally, the Chicago Housing Authority and their Plan for Transformation specifically acknowledges NTA as a resource and investment to support the Hilliard Homes and the Ickies redevelopment. The final point I want to make is that closing this school does more than just take a good thing away, it actually creates additional harms. It once again displaces communities who already were asked to bear this burden when they were cut out of the South Loop’s boundaries years ago, and those who were displaced in historic fifty-school closings. It imposes a burden on this community while many of the supporters that were listed tonight benefit while losing very little or nothing at all. It destroys the school community of educators, parents, community members who came together and worked hard to turn things around for their students and achieve the success we now see at NTA. It is for these reasons and the others outlined in our statement that we’ll be submitting that it is...
Thank you so much. We’ll get your materials.
Thank you.
Will Iko Hibino get in line, please? Ms. Brar?
My first name is N-I-K-E-T-A. Please stop the time.
Excuse me, excuse me. Continue with the time, please.
I’m sorry, I was following protocol by which you were holding the time for everyone else’s name. N-I-K-E-T-A, Brar is B-R-A-R. I’m the executive director of Chicago United for Equity, which is a Chicago-based organization focused on promoting more just, equitable, and inclusive city, bridging, building bridges across race, class, and geography. Our organization became involved in this proposal in response to community sentiment that this was not in line with community requests or interests, which was demonstrated after fifteen hundred signatures were supported, were submitted in opposition of this plan and over four hundred and seventy letters were submitted to state legislators requesting an assessment of this proposal through a racial equity assessment tool. Our organization has spent the last three months conducting a racial equity assessment, engaging over three hundred members of the Chinatown, South Loop, and Near South community. This is more than any of the other community organizations, and it is also a more diverse offering than any of the organizations that you’ve heard speak from today. Overwhelmingly, people supported the goals of diversity and high-quality school options, and overwhelmingly, the community decided that this was a proposal that would meet the Chinatown community’s needs to a certain extent, and that community has been underserved for nearly forty years. However, the community respondents also found that this disproportionately burdens three specific groups, all of which are low-income and African-American students, and that in response, there were seven, I’m sorry, six different proposals that were developed that would meet the same needs for diversity, that would meet the same needs for high-quality high school options, but would not disproportionately impact African-American students, would not create disruptions that are unnecessary, and would not systematically create a segregation border for Phillips High School, which currently has the ability to enroll a diverse offering of students and would not be able to if it was limited to the...
Thank you for your comments. Would Kiku Hibino get in line, please?
Good evening, my name is Jessica Schneider. I’m with the Chicago Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights, and alongside my colleagues who spoke before me, I’m here to express opposition to this proposal. I want to focus on and build on one aspect of this inequitable proposal that has already been mentioned. We have heard throughout this process that there needs to be a separate neighborhood high school, and that Phillips High School is not a viable option. It is supposedly too far, it is not a quality option, and it won’t work. However, at the same moment, CPS is considering a proposed school action that will send students in Englewood to Phillips High School when their school is closed. It is in fact farther for students in Englewood to travel to Phillips than it would be for South Loop students, so why is it not too far for them? South Loop is three-point-four miles from Phillips High School, Hope High School in Englewood is three-point-three miles away, and Robeson High School in Englewood is four-point-seven miles away. Students from South Loop at farthest would have to travel twenty-seven minutes by public transportation, yet the students from Hope and Robeson would have to travel thirty-five minutes by bus and train from Hope and thirty-seven minutes by train from Robeson. So I ask, when this is clearly an inequitable resolve, why is CPS operating in this way with this proposal? I submit it is because CPS has always operated in a way where what’s good enough option for one community of students is not good enough for another. Simply put, CPS is willing to reroute low-income Black students, but not others. Children know when you don’t think their community is worth the investment. This proposal will affect not just current students, but generations of students. In a district that overwhelmingly underserves low-income Black students, why close this overperforming Level One Plus school? These children are exceeding all their standards and expectations, and they should be able to continue to do so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, Uda Hibino, will you get in line? Iko Hibino, please? Please step aside, please, ma’am.
Good evening. Iko Kojima Hibino, A-I-K-O, K-O-J-I-M-A, H-I-B-I-N-O. I have an undergraduate degree in policy management and a master’s degree in video and governance studies. I am a POC candidate, a DED, and I'm a professor of Chicago sociology. I'm currently teaching sociology at the School of our Institute of Chicago, specifically a class on the focus on inequity in the food scape in the world, in the US, especially the city of Chicago. So this, I’m against this CPS proposal because this is following the concerning pattern of CPS, the current operation, which is racial inequity in Chicago is increasing as a result of current school construction and closure. of current school construction enclosures. The CPS school infrastructure spending is more inequitable than the retarded Illini Educational Funding Formula. Before funding reform, CPS received 76 cents for every dollar that majority-white districts received and asked for reform. Yet Chicago gave its own majority-black school just 38 cents, I repeat, just 38 cents, for every dollar spent on building and maintaining majority-white schools in Chicago from 2011 to 2015. Moreover, majority-white schools receives funds to drive community development. Majority-black schools, on the other hand, get funding to touch problems. The most common type of spending on majority-black schools was for interior renovations such as paint upgrades, security cameras, and metal detectors. The most common type of spending at the majority-white schools was new construction, 56% of these schools. Not a single segregated black school ever received new construction funds from fiscal year 2011 to 2015. So this is a concerning pattern, and this proposal is one of the typical cases of this. I'm against this proposal.
Thank you very much. Pauline Lipman, if you could get in line, please. And Kiku Hibino?
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Kiku Hibino, K-I-K-U, H-I-V-I-N-O. My child is a student at NTA, Level 1+, Title 1 school, where he is excelling due to the wonderfully dedicated work of the administrators, teachers, and parents. NTA was not consulted as required by Policy Manual Section 703.2, Section 3, because we would have expressed our opposition to this change. Our concern is regarding the negative impact to our school's performance, community, and enrollment numbers. I request that you meet with NTA parents to clarify this boundary change and to discuss the future plan to maintain this strong academic community and high-performance school. We do not feel that our interests are being well-served with this move, and that this has not been conducted in the spirit of the MCLB Title 1 Parental Enrollment Policy, Section 801.3. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Latasha Watkins, if you could get in line, please? This is a student? This is a student? Thank you. Student C.
I am a 3rd grader at NTA. I am against the proposal because I think it is wrong. It's not fair to NTA. It's another school CPS is destroying. NTA is a Level 1+ and we have a gym, a pool, a park, almost everything. All of that would be great for a high school, but there are still kids who have not even finished kindergarten. If you distract the young kids' education, you'll put the next generation of kids in trouble. NTA is the best school forever, black or white or Asian like me. Please do not close NTA.
Thank you very much. Would Chris Hall get in line, please? Carry on, please.
Pauline Lipman, L-I-P-M-A-N. I'm a professor of education policy at UIC. I'm a researcher and I work with data, but I'm not going to discuss CPS data. I've been testifying at school closing hearings since 2004. Every year, parents, teachers, students, and researchers like me come with testimonies and data for why schools should not be closed, but the mayor and his appointed board are not weighing data. No disrespect to you, sir. There is no way to understand the board's proposal to close NTA and shuffle students to South Loop outside the larger context of race, real estate, and privatization. So-called disparities between South Loop and NTA are negligible. That's smoke and mirrors. Here are some data we should pay attention to. Since 2001, CPS has closed, phased out, consolidated, or turned around 160 schools, almost all in black and brown communities. 87% of all students affected have been African-American. Meanwhile, CPS authorized 130 charter schools and spent money for that. Students shuffled from school to school, away from families, and trusted adults out of their neighborhood. Students from Christ were shuffled to NTA. Now, NTA students are going to be shuffled again. The NTA closing is tied to closing the only neighborhood high schools in Englewood. While CPS invests in schools in affluent and white Northside, they disinvest in neighborhood black high schools. This is part of an assault on low-income black Chicagoans that has driven 240,000 African-Americans out of Chicago since 2000 and cut the black teaching force almost in half. Our data show that school closings have not improved education and have been destabilizing for children and families and communities. Investing in Southside high schools doesn't have to be contingent on pushing out NTA.
Just stop the testimony there. Thank you very much. Okay, well, Leoman McGro, please. If I mispronounce your name, are you from the Gap Committee? Did I pronounce?
Leonard McGee.
I'm sorry. It says the Gap looks like committee. I'm sorry. Is it Leoman McGro? Okay, so you get in line after this gentleman's about. I'm sorry. Carry on, please, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Latasha Watkins, L-A-T-A-S-H-A-W-A-T-K-I-N-S. Is this really about a boundary change? If so, then a separate hearing really should be held regarding the high school portion of this. It's not the building that makes the school, it's the people, is what I heard. As long as the people are white enough, why don't current families within NTA boundaries send their children to NTA now, is the question. I feel like the problem of overcrowding at South Loop is a created problem when 40% of the children are from outside of South Loop's neighborhood boundary. The school is not overcrowded if it only admits the students within its boundary. I asked Alderman Dow specifically about whether we would do an attendance assessment, and I think respectfully she said, "No, we're not going to do that." Why? Why is that not being done to understand whether we really do need to build, number one, a new school? And then, two, whether it's needed to, whether we need to sacrifice NTA for a high school? We already talked about what community members generated this proposal, which were not those from NTA, who have not been involved in creating a proposal, and why have not other alternatives been seriously considered? For instance, why are Chinatown or South Loop or Bridgeport not offering one of their buildings for this conversion? What about investing in Dunbar and Phillips to better impact more CPS students, specifically those that are black and brown? What about building a new high school building structure instead of a new elementary school for South Loop? We are not against, as a NTA community, we're not against communities having a high school that they well-deserve. We're not against diversity. In fact, diversity is occurring naturally at NTA already. What we are against is sacrificing our students, who, why should they bear the burden of this change? Why should they be displaced and do so at their academic risk? Personally, I am a CPS student, and it looks like I'm out of time.
You are, thank you. Who do you have with you?
This is Nelson, who should be going to NTA.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You all know the applause will not be on the record. I did hear you, but it's not a record. That was for not. So, Janetta Dimitri, would you get in line, please? Carry on, sir, if you will, please.
Chris Hall, C-H-R-I-S-H-A-L-L. Oppose the plan. This deal has been described as not perfect, but good. However, in reality, a good deal is one where sacrifice and hardship are shared. When you list out the sacrifices in this deal, NTA students are the ones who lose their school building. NTA students are the ones who lose their teacher. NTA students are the ones who lose the administration that is lifting their school to its current 1+ height. NTA students are the only ones who lose. However, this has all been known since the plan was devised, and the reality is that the current proposal offers political benefits that outweigh the cost to the community and especially those born solely by the students and families at NTA. The question, then, is, is there a solution within the current proposal that could make it at least a good one? I believe there is. If the building at Sarnacan State is the only viable high school option for the communities involved, then the new building at 16th and Clark should become the new NTA. Now, this solution is still far from perfect. Ask anyone from the NTA community if they want to be forced from their school. Furthermore, it still inherits the issues with the current plan, most notably that both schools will suffer from overcrowding in the very near future. However, this common sense change to the proposal is also fair and has precedence. Dr. Janice Johnson has said the proposal was to right the wrong committed by CPS just 10 years ago. Alderman Dow said this as well. This statement is disingenuous at best, but if there is any honesty to it, this change would be hugely closer to that goal. Furthermore, this solution, unlike the first ever closing of a Level 1+ school, is not without precedent. It is the exact same solution that CPS implemented at South Loop Elementary the first time the same vulnerable families were displaced from their school. At the last meeting, a representative from PDA noted that the schools are the community's assets and the community to decide how they are best utilized. I agree with that sentiment. Let the community decide. Is my proposal perfect? No, but neither is the current one.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate. I'm gonna ask Kayla Perkins, please, to get in line. Carry on, sir.
My name is Leonard E. McGee, L-E-O-N-A-R-D, middle initial E, last name is M-C-S-P-E-C-G-E-E. I'm the president of the Gap Community Organization. First of all, I'd like you to consider the boundaries to be out of the TIP boundaries. The TIP, which was back in 1998 under the name of Havcock, is what had actually paid $38 million to build the school, which is built by black money, not South Loop. The TIP belongs, the school belongs to the TIP, and we are in support of bringing the high school. And the key word here is quality. A quality high school. They've talked about a lot of high schools in the area, but the issue was quality, and we would like to make sure that the TIP boundary, the people who paid for, and those are black people who paid for tax increment financing, over the last 20 years have actually put up $38 million. Most of the people in here didn't put a dime into the school. So we would like to have our building back. We're already at the table. We want the boundaries to reflect what the TIP is. And anybody else who wants to sit at the table, we welcome them, but the African-American community that built it and paid for it should have access to the high school. Thank you.
Thank you very much, there. And would, is it Milda Sancha?
Saunders.
Yes, would you get in line? Thank you so much. Thank you, though.
Hello. I'm Janetta, J-O-H-E-N-T-A, D-E-N-D-I-M-Y-N-G. I'm here, a parent and a resident of the low-income community of Bronzeville, and I'm here because all the stuff that we're talking about, can none of this stuff make sense to half the people that are trying to make this decision? The only thing I'm asking is that whatever decisions y'all make, could y'all just include, think about us, think about us, because our kids, you know, they need a chance. We're trying to do what we can to make sure our kids have, you know, equal rights to everybody else, and we're trying to do the right thing to our kids. We asking y'all the same things, if you're right, you know, do right to our kids. Our kids deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miles Sanders, if you could get in line, please?
I have to go up with him.
Hi. I am 12 years old, in the 7th grade, and I am a proud NTA scholar and a proud-
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you. You can start her time again, but this is our student C.
D.
D. I beg your pardon. Go ahead.
I am 12 years old, in the 7th grade, and I am a proud NTA scholar and a proud member of NTA Student Congress, where we are taught to be leaders and advocate for our school. I have been attending NTA since I was in kindergarten. In my eight years at NTA, being only child, I have met so many amazing teachers, staff, and most of all, I've built friendships with my peers. I've gone from a kid who was shy and to myself, to a teen who has been taught by my teachers to believe in myself, to believe in myself. NTA is not just an elementary school to me, it's my second home. More than anything, NTA is where I began learning life skills to prepare me for my future. I feel this proposal is racist and unjust towards African-American students and should not be continued. CPS does not listen to how its students, families, and staff feel. They only care about making change for South Loop and other communities and breaking apart our NTA family. I have said this before and I will say it again. CPS needs to be building up schools, not tearing them down. Black students' lives and their education matter, but they obviously can't see that. Our principal, Mr. Castellaz, is an amazing principal who believes in all of his students. NTA needs to remain a Level 1+ elementary school and nothing less. NTA is here to stay.
Thank you very much. Isaac Castellas, if you could get in line, please? Carry on, please.
Hi, I'm Milda Saunders, M-I-L-D-A-S-A-U-N-D-E-R-S. I'm an NTA parent of two children, a physician, and a lifelong Chicagoan. NTA is a Level 1 predominantly African-American, predominantly low-income school. We should be studied and emulated, not closed or boundary changed out of existence. We support diverse schools, both racially and socio-economically. We welcome families to join us, but to close a high-functioning school because it sits on prime real estate, that's not integration, that's colonization. As a lifelong Southsider, I agree that the Near South side should have a high school option, but this is not the way. Has CPS ever closed a Level 1 school? I sympathize with parents in Chinatown, Bridgepoint, Near South, and even the South Loop. Your struggles are important, but our children matter, too. NTA has school supports, medical clinics, and more importantly, staff and faculty who have always wanted them there and have always supported them. We are better than this Chicago. We are better than this CPS. This doesn't, this is a false choice. This proposal does not make sense. We shouldn't close Level 1+ schools. We shouldn't build a high school that will rapidly be too small for all of the communities that it proposes it will serve, and we don't let one community take a school from another community just because they want it. Let's come up with an equitable and rational plan. Let's consider Dunbar, King, Phillips, or other schools, other than this plan. We're better than this.
Thank you. Patricia Crosby, if you could get in line, please? This is going to be, I take it, student E.
I am a 3rd grade student at NTA. I have been there since I was in kindergarten. I have so many friends at NTA, I can't even count them. Many of them are not even in my grade. It's like a second family to me. NTA has the most amazing teachers. They make learning exciting and fun. They are always there to help. We have a program called Second Step, which helps us learn with kids in other classes and get to know them. This has helped to make new friends outside of my regular home room. We can compare how I like one thing and they might like another thing. They encourage you to be partners across classrooms. We have an awesome pool with great swim classes, and I know I'm a much better swimmer than I used to be. I think the plan to convert NTA to a high school is wrong. It will hurt many families, including mine. My sis, I have two younger siblings. My sister is here at NTA in kindergarten, and my brother is 2 years old. Like many families, we may be split apart. I would stay at NTA. My sister has to go to South Loop, and my brother can't go to either one. Because the plan requires a lot of construction, I'm afraid I would lose a lot of my friends because who wants to learn in a construction zone? It can't be good for any student's education to deal with that in class. I'd lose the pool as well. My sister definitely loses the pool because South Loop does not have one, and also the health center. I take public transit with my dad and get to school, my dad and sister, to get to school. We're not sure how that will work, and my building is 10 blocks away from hers. I'm afraid CPS would be tearing their apart, the NTA community that I love. This plan will hurt many families, including and strong, great community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Darryl Aknepona? I'm sorry, I'm sure I didn't address this to your name. Sir, carry on, please.
Isaac Castellas, I-S-A-A-C-C-A-S-T-E-L-A-Z. I'm the principal at National Teachers Academy. Back in 1966, nearly to this day, Dr. Marvin Luther King Jr. moved into a West Side apartment to join a movement designed to desegregate Chicago. During this time in our city, Dr. King came to see that, more than passing new laws, the crisis Chicagoans face could only be solved once we learned to, quote, "desegregate our minds," end quote. In so doing, he called for, quote, "a coalition of conscience," end quote. Brave people of every race and background working together to serve the cause of equity. He said, quote, "Our power is in our unity, the force of our souls, and the determination of our bodies," end quote. This proposal reminds us of the conditions King spoke of so long ago. We are told this plan could right a historical wrong in which the boundary of South Loop school was moved to exclude poor black children, who were sent to NTA, a new, unproven school at that time. However, this proposal won't right that wrong because NTA has righted that- However, this proposal won't right that wrong, because NTA has righted that wrong all by itself. Whereas the boundary shift years ago denied poor black children a quality education at South Loop Elementary School, those same students today have a quality, high-quality option at NTA, which has risen from a level three to a level one-plus school in four years. NTA is a product not only of the kind of coalition Dr. King saw, but also the power of the kind of unity he envisioned so many years ago. The process of considering this proposal has shown us just how powerful the NTA community is, but I also think that hidden beneath it all is an opportunity, an opportunity to do something truly remarkable. Let's do as Dr. King urged and form a coalition of conscience between our communities. I call for us all, NTA, South Loop, Chinatown, CPS, and yes, City Hall, to reconsider this proposal together-
Sir, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jawan Boston, please? Would you get in line? Carry on, please, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Patricia Crosby, P-A-T-R-I-C-I-A, last name Crosby, C-R-O-S-P-Y. I'm a proud NTA biological foster and adoptive parent of six young, brilliant young men, and I have two left at NTA. We're a level one-plus elementary school. Our children, the teachers, staff, and parents work extremely hard to get to the level status. Now, usually, when you achieve this major accomplishment, you're rewarded, but instead, it feels as if we're being punished. When I think about NTA, I think about, it takes a village to raise a child, and that's what NTA has been doing. One of my children, who's in seventh grade now, he was my foster son now, he's my adoptive son. He went to two schools prior to this, and he was labeled as learner's learning disabled. But being at NTA, he thrived. Now, I already knew he was a genius, but being at NTA, he thrived. Right now, he's, his grades, he's in seventh grade, his grades are As and Bs, and they're trying to get him into a select enrollment school. It's unfortunate, I mean, I agree, I respect everyone's opinion, but what people have to understand is that we have to think about the children. NTA children, they need that elementary school. Please try not to turn NTA into a high school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chantel Boston, if you'll get in line, please? Sir, are you a student?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to show you a student F. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon. It makes no sense to put NTA in a different, to put NTA students in a different environment. This will affect students mentally and academically. This will make NTA students feel as though they are inferior, since they are not being considered at all. This will make it less convenient for NTA families. Should you really take away someone's home because their scores are slightly lower, are slightly lower than people from families that have more money and resources? Grammar schools, grammar schools where a student develops the most. So would you want to put fourth graders in the same environment as high schoolers? Even eighth graders have trouble transitioning to high school. Yet you give fourth graders the burden, the burden of having to live with this four years early. Think, think back to your fourth grade year, where you probably barely managed to make friends, and all of a sudden having to be put into, having to be put near high school, which we have completely different ways than you do. What would become of your teachers and our students' future? It is true that people must travel out of their way to go to high school, but now we have to go out of our way to go to school. Students in the South Loop will have an opportunity to be successful, but another community won't. So you are prioritizing another community over us. How would you feel if you had your current home ripped away from you, and you were told to go somewhere else? A home that you've had for most of your life, taken away by people who don't even know you, just because they can't? Just because your peers' score is slightly lower, so the outcome of your life just got completely changed because of someone else's test score, not yours, and nothing that you say or do can change that? We are not numbers or letters that can be measured and placed in boxes, we are people. Thanks to our great teachers, our scores are rapidly growing, and at this rate, we'll soon surpass the South Loop. Your honor, I'm almost done, so can I just?
Sir, I have to, I have to move you along. I still have half more to go from you. Thank you so much. This is student? Are you a student, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Carry on, please.
I'm a sixth grader currently attending the, attending the school at NTA. Our school shouldn't be shut down just because people want it for their kids, but my classmates and my peers and I, we deserve a quality education. Also, and I'm kind of a proud child at school, and the staff at my school do all that they can to make it better for me and the rest of my kid, and the rest of the kids at NTA. Over the past four years that I've been attending NTA, I've been, you know, people have been helping me and giving me chance, a chance, which shows that they do care, because if they didn't, I would probably be expelled. So if, so I appreciate the staff, Ms. Brown, Ms. Brooks, Mr. Castellaz, and a former staff member, Mr. Valencia, and other staff members. NTA is our second home. We all live here, so don't destroy it. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Will Olivia Shelton, please, get in line? And Sarah Bush, will you get in line as well? Are you a student?
No.
Okay. Well, I hope I played a compliment. Carry on, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Chantel Boston, S-H-A-N-T-E-L-B-O-S-T-O-N. Hello, I am a parent of three children who currently attend NTA. The current proposal that presents the idea to close NTA and scatter our children into three separate buildings is a huge inconvenience to my family and I. Even though I became a mother at a very young age, I have always aimed to give my children a sense of stability wherever I chose to reside. I have always aimed to do whatever was necessary to assure just that. Even in the time where we live in a group home, clear across town, I traveled miles to get them to a quality school on time every day and walk them to school every day to ensure their safety, where we were living in a gang-infested neighborhood. Now we live in a much better neighborhood, where my children are able to walk by themselves to school, and now with them being separated to different buildings, my children will have to travel to and from school without the protection of each other, especially my five-year-old son, who will have to travel alone to school. There is room for over four thousand students at Wendell Phillips High School and also Dunbar High School for residents of the communities the said proposal is supposed to accommodate. The high school students to attend currently, and I don't understand why small children will be forced to make a further commute for school, and the high school students who are at an appropriate age to commute back and forth to school using public transportation. The fact that these children and their families have made the decision not to attend their neighborhood high school is a choice they have made, but the schools are there and available to all of these communities that are requesting for another school at the cost of our school at NTA, and it is totally unacceptable. My point in case and all that I have said is that all of our young, school-aged generations deserve a quality education, but most, but must it be at a cost of the inconvenience to some, but a convenience to others. I am and will always be opposed to the current proposal of closing NTA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will Joy Clendenning get in line, please? Carry on, ma'am.
Your Honor, my name is Olivia, O-L-I-V-I-A, Shelton, S-H-E-L-T-O-N. I'm here to oppose closing NTA. I am a grandmother. My grandson, Emile, he's in third grade. Emile used to be an introvert. Since we came to NTA, Emile has really grown. He had been on the honor roll at least for two years. I'm older. I am committed, because Emile is committed, to going to school, being at school on time. Emile is committed to being in his class. Emile is committed to not wanting to miss anything. Now, why, why, why does he feel like that? Because he loves the school. I love the school, but I observe it and participating, and most importantly, NTA is a community. Emile is taught, I love the way they position their classes. It's like a community, it's in a round table. He's learning not just academics, he's learning life lessons, how to be in the community and how to be an individual. I really love that. Also, my grandson has asthma, and the clinic is a lifesaver. He has had several episodes, and the clinic was able to take care of it just like that. I didn't have to go anywhere. They knew what to do, they have his records on file, and they know what to do. And secondly, I just think that CPS and everybody else needs to know, it's never a wrong time to do the right thing. Please do the right thing when it comes to NTA, because it's just not fair. It's just not fair. And everybody that stands on the sidelines and don't speak up, you're guilty. You should always say something when you have an opportunity. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you very much. Well, I think it's Priya Shaw, if you'd get in line, please? Carry on, ma'am, please.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Bush. I'm a parent, a Sarah Bush, S-A-R-A-H-B-U-S-H, parent of two daughters at NTA. I want to talk about the process here. First of all, despite a number of what can only be described as pro forma community meetings, there's been very little community input, especially from NTA. As Ms. Feldstein pointed out, this was a plan that was hatched long ago, long before anyone at NTA was consulted. Meanwhile, at the community meetings, we've heard speaker after speaker raising concerns about the destruction of our wonderful community. Yet the plan before you scatters our students across four different campuses, splitting up families and destroying that community. Speakers have pointed out that the proposed high school does not really meet the needs of the full near-south community, Chinatown, Bronzeville, Bridgeport, many are left out. It's simply too small. We've heard about how fast this community is growing, it's going to be overcrowded almost immediately. Students are being forced into a school built for a grammar school. We've asked the board to consider other options to meet that need in the near-south community. Just this past week, we requested that the Office of Family and Community Engagement facilitate a meeting between NTA parents and those in the South Loop, and we were refused that meeting. That should have been the first step in any community-driven process, considering many alternatives. I want to turn then to the personal side. Like many NTA families, my family has already felt the impact of a school closing. My daughter will be one of those fourth graders sent to school with high school students, simply not acceptable. This instability created by this plan is bad for children, bad for families, and bad for the city. What kind of a school district closes a high-functioning, well-loved school community? This process has been deeply flawed from the very beginning, and this plan is a terrible one. I stand before you in strong opposition to the plan to close NTA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will Kevin Stensel, is it Stensel? Yes, would you get in line, please? Carry on, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Joy Clendenning, J-O-Y-C-L-E-N-D-E-N-N-I-N-G, and I'm honored and humbled to stand here with the amazing people in this room and the amazing people in the overflow room. I'm a CPS parent. It's my sixteenth year. I'm a former public high school teacher. I have a BA from Harvard in history and a master's in education policy from UIC. I'm the managing director for Raise Your Hand for Illinois Public Education, a parent advocacy group, which advocates for equitable and adequate public education funding and education policies which provide quality education to all children. Over the past eight years, we have worked with parents, students, and schools about facilities and programs at their schools throughout CPS and Illinois. We've read and analyzed the various criteria year after year, the various formulae applied, and the legal code. Our conclusion: Without a robust, authentic community engagement process that creates a real, comprehensive, city-wide facilities plan, CPS should put a hold on closing and opening schools. Speaking specifically to the case of NTA, your honor, this proposal should not move forward because this is not a community-developed and community-supported proposal, therefore it does not meet that criteria, and the proposal is not in the best interest of the students. NTA students are at a wonderful school, which meets their needs, and they are doing well. Moving them is not in their best interest. You have the chance, your honor, to make the right and just recommendation. Tell CPS that this school action should not move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will Aria Lundvik, please, get in line? Carry on, ma'am. Yes?
My name is Priya Shaw, P-R-I-Y-A-S-H-A-H. Your honor, I stand before you today as both a veteran CPS teacher and parent to a second grader at NTA. NTA's boundaries should not be decimated, nor should it be closed and converted to a high school. As an educator, I'm deeply offended that this proposal even exists. The proposal is rooted in racism and blatantly ignores the tremendous achievement that NTA has shown during its tenure as a Chicago public school. Working in a high-achieving selective enrollment school on the North Side, I'm painfully aware that these types of proposals never attempt to destroy school communities in more affluent areas. As a parent, the options that have been presented for my son and his peers are unacceptable. I reject option one, to send him to a school that spans three buildings and has eighteen-hundred-plus students. There is no data that supports success in schools that are so immensely large, especially for low-income minority students. I also reject option two, keeping him at NTA. The prospect of keeping him at a school that is slowly being destroyed and reduced year by year, while half of his schoolmates are transferred to another school, is equally unacceptable. As the youngest grade in the building, he would be a fourth grader. My son would no longer have opportunities to shine as a mentor to younger students as our phenomenal NTA middle schoolers who are behind me do on a daily basis. Your honor, my message to you is this: Encourage the Chicago Board of Education to vote against this proposal. Show integrity by asking them to visit NTA, to see firsthand the magic that occurs there on a daily basis. Have the courage to view the proposal objectively, without the influence of politics and those, of those with wealth and power. Finally, do what is right for my child and NTA children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rochelle McGee, if you'd get in line, please? I'd like the record to show that we are beyond the time of eight-thirty, when the, this meeting, this hearing was to have terminated. However, we have a number of speakers to go. I'm going to continue until all the cards that I have. Everybody's had their opportunity to have their two minutes, but I'm going to ask everybody, please, keep to the two minutes so that we can get everybody through the system tonight. Thank you so much, sir. Carry on, ma'am.
Thank you. Kevin Stanciel, S-T-A-N-C-I-E-L. I'm a resident of the Gap, which is between Thirty-first, Thirty-fifth, Michigan, and King Drive for over twenty-five years. Personally, my eighteen-year run at CPS ends this spring, when my daughter graduates from high school, my youngest daughter graduates from high school. At no time did either of my daughters have a good high school option. I'm here, not for myself, I'm here for all of my neighbors, so that they don't have to travel very far or pay for private high schools as they do right now. In the Gap, we have eight high schools within six blocks of our neighborhood, five citywide charters, two military academies, two alternative schools, an all-girls school and all-boys school. All of those schools but one are level two or two-plus. In your press release for this, Pastor Earl Granberry is quoted as saying, "All of our kids deserve access to a high-quality high school in their community." If this plan is approved, students from the North Bronzeville area will no longer have to travel far outside their community to reach their dream school. Well, in my neighborhood, they won't. We're in the preference enrollment boundary. If you choose to go forward with this plan, I ask that you include the Pershing boundaries within this plan, because the thing is, is that, and let me say that, as a proud Persian graduate also, as, according to your numbers, the Gap and Lake Meadows have a total of eighty-seven students. So you're telling me that you can't find, using about thirty-one percent of the students with attend, you cannot find about forty-five seats for the students in our communities? Thank you.
Thank you. Rochelle McGee, would you get in line, please? And also, will CW Chan get in line? Ma'am, continue.
I'm Anna Lundvik, L-U-N-D-E-B-I-C-K. To Chicago, when Dr. King delivered his I Have a Dream speech, he challenged a promise made in the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident- We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, with certain unalienable rights, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Dr. King said, "It is obvious that America has defaulted on this promissory note. Instead of honoring the sacred obligation, America has given the Negro people a bad check, a check that has come back marked insufficient funds." To Chicago, the plan to close NTA centers around one school, Phillips, a Level Two high school whose students are majority-black and economically disadvantaged. A powerful South Loop community leader shared with the media that Phillips is not an option and that it's no wonder South Loop parents scramble to find a better high school for their children. CPS supports the belief that Phillips is not quality, in a letter to South Loop families stating that converting NTA to a high school provides, quote, "a continuum of high-quality school options." And at the same time, CPS is declaring that Phillips is quality for displaced Black students from Inglewood. In a letter to Inglewood families, CPS states that Phillips provides Inglewood students with a, quote, "higher-performing high school that is good match for their needs." Their needs, whose needs? Black students' needs, definitely not white students' needs. To Chicago, CPS promises a commitment to every child from every community. They do, but do they really? Where else but in Chicago would a school board close a top-rated school transforming the lives of Black students? Where else but in the city? CNN reported as the most segregated in the nation would a school board close a school where Black students grow more than seventy-five percent of nationwide, of students nationwide. This is another bad check, another promissory note coming back marked insufficient funds. To Chicago, eliminating NTA in order to provide a high-quality school option...
Thank you very much, your time is up. Next, excuse me, ma'am, your time is up. Carry on, please, and will Heidi Chan get in line, please?
My name is Rochelle McGee, R-O-C-H-E-L-L-E, last name M-C-G-E-E. What I would like to do is to give my position here to the gentleman next to me.
Who is the gentleman next to you?
Letter D.
Sir, you already testified here earlier?
Yes, sir.
Okay, in fairness to the other people who want to be heard, I think that I'm going to hold you until the end. We'll have the time at the end, and we'll hold you then. Thank you. I won't deny it, but I wanted to be fair to everybody else.
Thank you.
Will Caitlin Hines? I hope I got that right. Get in line, please. Mr. Chan, if you will.
Hi, I'm C.W. Chan, chairperson for Coalition for Better Chinese-American Committee, also chairperson for China Convention Plan, Stephen Committee that charts the development of the committee. So how long we've been talking about this issue of the high school issue? A few months ago, when the committee came to the public hearings, made of the parent on their own initiative, put up these T-shirts that we've been waiting for forty years. But forty years only indicate these people, the parents that experience, forty years means a lifetime for them. I've talked to people over eighty years ago, and sixty-some years ago, they already talking about the experience taking two hours to go to high school, growing up in Chinatown. So when we celebrate the Chinatown, excuse me, sir?
The clock, on the clock, please.
Oh, thank you very much. Trust me, sir, I know how much time you have. So recently Chinatown was having discussion, a few years ago commemorating the community's centennial, which means we have been at the same location for over a hundred years. Very few people realize that. Okay, look at the city of Chicago, as the ethnic community, I think we've been at the same location longer than any other else. So we have experienced, we have seen the history of neglect and inequities. And for the whole hundred years, we never had a high school. So when we engaged in this recent plan, we interviewed about two thousand people in the community, and the high school issue came out to be one of the top concern for the whole community. That's for us to come to the hearing for the last few months, we have been to every single public hearing and board meeting for the last few months just to state our case. We started with a several approach, we came up with data and statistics. And it was never questioned that we had a need. But then, I think, nothing happened. So we started having an emotional response, like, is it because we've been advocating...
Sir, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, your time here this evening. Thank you.
Well, I think you have to give me the benefit of the doubt when you're making me sick about the time.
Sir, excuse me, your time is up. Please, we have a lot of other people that want to be heard.
Yeah, I challenge them, but I...
For the record, you're a gentleman. Did Kathy or Caitlin Hines? Okay, we'll put that aside. Is it Sarah? Can't read the name. I'll give these to, why don't you come up and get these and see what you can do about identifying whoever those might be? Malika Medved? Okay. Get it right down. Thank you. And Malika Medved's in line? Okay, thank you. Carry on, ma'am, please.
Hi, I'm Heidi Chan, H-E-I-D-I-C-H-A-N. I've been living in Chicago over fifty years, and I have seen a lot of problems in Chinatown area, and also local problem. And now it's come to the school. When I saw my friends and some people younger than me, or some nephew or nieces, they finished school, they could not go to a local high school. And they have to travel so far away, more than one hour, more than three miles to go. And they have to get up so early. So we have the problem. Chinatown is already a hundred years old, and we've been waiting for about forty years to get a high school. And now we have a chance to get, to hear that we have a high school. But I'm for that. And I agree all the people in this area, they try to have their kids to go to a quality high school, and also the length of the traveling. So I'm for this because when I heard the people say you can go to Phillips Dunbar or something, but when you finish school, will you send your kid Dunbar or Phillips or something? Thank you very much to listen to me.
Thank you very much. Okay, your name, full name, please?
My name is Kathy Nieng, K-A-T-I-C-H-Y-N-I-E-N-G.
Sorry about what I did to your name.
That's okay.
Okay, carry on.
Good evening, Your Honor.
Good evening.
I stand here today to strongly oppose this proposal when I should be in bed recovering from the flu. I am the parent of a NTA student and a fourteen-year South Loop resident. It's interesting to me that many people who are for this proposal go on and talk about how they're not racist, or that this is not a racist plan. So I would like to talk about something that everybody hit behind, and that is traffic, and that is transportation. As a resident who lives north of Roosevelt Road, when my husband and I drive our daughter to and from school, we pass by where the new South Loop school is going to be. There is a Mariano's there. There is also Day Star Elementary School, a private Christian school that is also planning on expanding. Because of this, there is going to be a severe traffic and congestion issue in this area. And there's nothing I can do personally to stop this school from being built, but because of this plan, the students from NTA who are going to be displaced are going to be displaced, the youngest ones are going to be displaced to the old building at twelve-twelve South Loop. Considering the fact that many students have already been displaced from Ickies and from, and from the Hilliard Homes, have the opportunity to walk to NTA and be able to do that, the youngest and most vulnerable of them would have to travel that much further without the help of being in the neighborhood and having to take public transportation. And this is not fair to the students who are the most vulnerable and would need the most help to do this, and this is one very practical reason that I oppose this plan. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Will Hannah Ekman get in line, please? Carry on, ma'am.
My name is Sarah Strasser, S-A-R-A-S-T-R-A-S-S-E-R. And I just want to start off by saying good evening and how much I really don't want to be here tonight. My daughter's really sick. She called me crying on the way down here. This has been an enormous strain on my family. The amount of meetings that we have had to attend is something that no family should have to do. But I'm here to talk about how this plan affects my family and families like mine with more than one child. I'm here with a final attempt to get you to listen and to allow me to keep my children together. I have three kids, they're all three years apart. This plan splits my kids apart. My son orders to stay, he would stay at NTA. My daughter has to go to South Loop, and my young child would not be able to go to either one. NTA is the school that my husband and I chose for them. We've visited many schools, we ranked NTA number one, and we chose NTA. Sometimes people ask why I didn't choose my neighborhood school, and I'm going to add a small fact here, aside from the fact that they're on their fourth principal in four years, CPS tried to do a very similar thing to my neighborhood school. Last year, they proposed consolidating and overcrowding two majority-black schools, one which was my neighborhood school, to relieve overcrowding at a nearby school that just happened to be eighty-five percent white. I am trying CPS, but we are really going to become one of those families that are all too familiar in this city, that have given up and left CPS for the sanity of their family. I ask that you not allow this boundary change as it splits apart many families just like mine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would Nadia Mohare, get in line, please? Carry on, ma'am, please.
Hi, my name is Milica Medved, M-I-L-I-C-A-M-E-D-V-E-D. My son is in kindergarten at NTA, and I, first of all, want to say that this proposal is a wrong solution because it's wrong, and it's also a solution for a wrong problem because everybody keeps saying, "We need a high school, we need a high school." There is a high school. Everybody has a high school. Okay, so apparently there's a problem with Phillips. Why is there a problem with Phillips? We had the Prairie District Neighborhood Association come on here on record to state that they've been working on this problem since two thousand and six. So that's twelve years. That's twelve years of opportunity to work with CPS, to invest in a neighborhood school, to ask for money and investment. Look at all this energy and all the money and all the investments and all the construction that is involved in this proposal. A lot of grief could have been avoided if that money were invested in Phillips. So there's that. On the other hand, I wanted to put it on record that I have been to NTA to check whether or not that's a good school for my son. And I happened to walk into the open house, and I looked at the data that was presented, and it was really astounding. I have seen the growth charts for students, third, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, this is neighborhood students, which are growing two or three times more than the projected growth based on the testing standards. That is huge. This is how you pick schools. You don't pick a South Loop school because your students test well, you pick a school where children will grow. And this is what NTA gives their students, an opportunity to grow.
Thank you very much. Will Noor Mohajir get in line, please? Okay, do we have Hannah? Will you give your first and last name and spell it for the court reporter, please?
Hannah Elamene, H-A-N-N-A-H-E-L hyphen A-M-I-N. I want to speak to the idea or the notion that the results of this proposal are not harmful. The third ward where NTA is housed has had more closures and more displacement of African-American economically disadvantaged students than any other ward in Chicago. Research shows the ill effects of displacement, again, one year before displacement and lasts up to three years after in terms of attendance, academic performance, college attendance as well. Merge that data with the fact that many NTA families have already lived through displacement two to three times, including getting kicked out of the very school community that is now asking them to move once again to use our building for their needs, shamelessly and comically cloaking this and writing a rung. Also, previous mergers in the ward have been shown to drop the ratings of well-performing schools, including Persian Elementary. This proposal would serve to create the largest elementary school in the CPS school district, spread across three to four campuses, when school size has been shown to adversely affect academic achievement. I know that we have been told that the children are being moved to a better school, or that South Loop Elementary is a better school than NTA, but the achievements at South Loop Elementary are expected from a school with greater economic advantages, access to resources, and no history of the repeated destabilization of their education. Compare that to NTA, who has exactly the opposite set of circumstances, which has risen from their lowest possible CPS ranking to the absolute highest possible CPS ranking in just three years. And we are also one of only eighteen schools out of over six hundred in CPS that serve the African-American community with this academic and community profile in this way. One of only eighteen, I want to state that again, and are we set to take this away? You will hear some voices in support of this proposal, but I want to make sure that you're careful to notice that the only support that you hear are those with everything to gain and nothing to lose. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And will Sahid Aman get in line, please? And you are?
Hi, my name is Nadia Mohajir, N-A-D-I-A-H-M-O-H-A-J-I-R. I am a parent at NTA, and Your Honor, I'm here to express my strong opposition to this plan, and I'm here to tell you that this is not about me being emotional, this is actually about doing what's right. I have three children and have applied to various schools using the central application process for the last eight years. We have had the experience of being registered or enrolled at eight different schools at different times during the last eight years, and we have visited over twenty-six. I have seen the great work that is happening at NTA, which surpasses any of the other schools that we've been at or visited, not simply just by, because of the phenomenal academics, but because of the strong social justice curriculum values that they are exposed to since kindergarten. NTA gives me the hope for not only the kind of citizen my children and their peers will become, but for the future of this amazing city. I truly believe that tomorrow's activists and public servants will come from National Teachers Academy. Schools like this should be highlighted, replicated, and improved, and not underutilized or closed down. Unfortunately, though, we're here today because CPS has decided it's in the best long-term interest for the Near South community to dismantle this great work that's happening. Your Honor, tonight I ask you, will a new thousand-seat building really serve the needs any better than the existing forty-five-hundred vacant seats? What if CPS added an excellent ESL program in bilingual education at one of these schools, like Kelly High School has been offering to its students from Chinatown for decades? Or why not add an Ivy program or STEM partnership with IIT to these underutilized high schools? Invest in the teachers and administration to make these schools more attractive. Our children deserve a better plan. Chicago deserves a better plan, and I stand today with the NTA community in calling a pause for this plan because this proposal should not move forward. We cannot sacrifice a successful school and must find alternatives.
Thank you very much. We're not going to have the student's name, but we have, I have to know, you just spoke, did you not, ma'am?
This is my son.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, but I'm trying to determine, is this Noor?
It is not. No, Noor is not.
Thank you.
This is Sahid.
I'm sorry, it's...
It's the other student.
Begins with an S?
It begins with an S.
Okay, let's try that. Student, you're going to be, student, or sir, who begins with an S, you're going to be student H. Carry on, please.
Hi, I'm a fifth grader at National Teachers Academy. I've been there since first grade. I think that this proposal is a bad idea because it'll move a lot of kids, and it's already a perfect school for too many people. It'll break our community apart, our community, because NTA is more than just a school to us. It's our home, our family. This includes our amazing principal, Mr. Klassis, our inspiring teachers, and our beloved friends. As with all good families, NTA is a source of stability and confidence. We need to learn and grow in school and outside of school. We do this well and deserve to be supported and not torn apart, like how my brother and I will be split between schools. I want to also share to you that at NTA, we have something called the NTA Way. The NTA Way encourages us to always display courage, commitment, awareness, and integrity. Because of this, even though I used to be a very shy kid, I have developed the courage to speak up here for my school, that I show my commitment to my school. In honor of the NTA Way, I want, I also ask our school leaders to have awareness, to be able to see that this plan is harmful, and have integrity to be able to reject it. Please think of us children, do better. We are putting trust in you. I would also like to add in the slogans, "We are NTA, and NTA here to stay." These might not sound like much, but it demonstrates NTA and its core values. We've spent money that we don't have to promote these slogans, and they are not to be thrown around, just like we would if they passed the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bonnie Sanchez Carlson, and then, is it Bethany Toldor? Uh, Bonnie Sanchez Carlson, and then i- is it, is it Bethany Toldor? Counsel, you may wanna see if you can get somebody identified with that, please. Greg McClure, will you get in line, please? Carry on, ma'am.
Bonnie Sanchez Carlson, B.O.N.N.I.E.S.A.N.C.H.E.Z hyphen C.A.R.L.S.O.N. Uh, I represent Near-South Planning Board, a community-based organization serving the community since nineteen forty-six. Our organization was deeply concerned about the boundaries for the plan that was presented, uh, before us. In fact, on August twenty-fifth, we provided a letter to CPS questioning the boundaries proposed for the near, near, uh, new elementary school. In our letter, we were adamant that the boundaries be extended south, in particular, um, south to include what was the former Iki's housing project, um, so that all the right to return former residents and new students have equitable access to a quality education. In our most recent review of the updated plans, we're pleased to discover that our recommendations are being considered and have been incorporated in the newly released proposal. Um, as I mentioned also in our August twenty-seventeen letter, the unprecedented growth of our residential population in the past decade, with more units proposed for future development, necessitated the call for a public high school to serve the community. In reviewing the recent changes made to the, to the plan and the extension of the boundaries noted in said plan, Near-South Planning Board supports the newest version, uh, of this plan.
Thank you very much. Uh, will Mike or Mick Lockwood and Tara Lockwood get in line, please? And before we go any farther, um, Rochelle McGee, you still in the room?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, on the, on the card itself, uh, one of the, one of the rules is that you cannot cede your time. So if you'd like to take your time, whenever, in the next couple of minutes, I'll put you in, okay? Or we'll hold you to the end, but you can't cede your time. Carry on, sir.
I am Greg McClure, G.R.E.G.G.M.C., uppercase C.L.U.R.E. Good evening.
Good evening.
To the NTA staff, students, parents, and our supporters, I applaud and I celebrate you. You took the fight to the very doorsteps of the hidden figures that have drawn up these new boundaries. The city and this neighborhood in which NTA thrives is in the spotlight, but be careful, though. I was once told that all publicity is not good publicity. I stand here in disappointment. I am disappointed for believing in my city, my mayor, the third ward alderman, and everyone that is involved with the decision of kicking out our children of, from NTA. I mean, kudos to those that are considered the powers that be or the people with the money to influence. Your point was proven. Maybe instead of teaching my children that going to school every day and doing the best in class and in your community and being the best person that you can be is simply not enough. I need to teach them that their money and the people that they form their allegiances with is what really matters. I gambled five years ago when I chose NTA for my son, not on the school, but on CPS. You see, my parents were on to something back in nineteen eighty when they decided to send me to Catholic school, King College. It wasn't because we were devout Catholics, it was about, and it wasn't about the quality of the education, but it was about the instability, the political influence, and the questioning of the true platitude of our city schools. I now get it. NTA was never built for the inhabitants that are in there today. NTA was targeted since two thousand and ten as an important asset to others. My time is splitting up. I implore the appointed board to make history today and vote down the measures that CPS leadership is presenting. This is the only way to right this wrong. Leave the NTA children and community be. We've only shined up the jewel that has been sitting in the rough-
Thank you very much, sir.
-and we only want-
Louis Makarowitz, if you'd get in line, please?
I'm Dr. Lockwood.
Mr. Lockwood?
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Mark Lockwood, M.A.R.K.L.O.C.K.W.O.O.D. And I thank you for the opportunity to, uh, speak with you this evening. Uh, throughout these proceedings, the NTA families have been characterized as loud, rowdy, even hateful. I'm here to tell you today, Your Honor, that we are not hateful. Uh, I would like to ask you to come to NTA for yourself and see the love that is at NTA. It's a very impressive place. We can sit here all night and talk till we're blue in the face about how wonderful NTA is. I wish you would take the opportunity to stop by and see for yourself. Uh, it's very troubling tonight to hear the members who are in favor of, of this motion to speak about NTA as if it's a vacant building. Uh, they are right when they say that it is a very valuable asset and the asset is inside the walls. Um, so, I want to be clear, we're only here for one fundamental reason. We're here to defend against the closure of a Level One-plus Chicago public school that serves mostly black, low-income children. That's it. We're here to defend against the closure of a Level One-plus CPS school. I, I don't know if that sounds odd to you, but I, I, it's hard for me to wrap my mind around that. I want to let you know I've been coming here for weeks and weeks and weeks. I object to the hostile takeover of my son's school. I object to being dragged into this contentious situation unwillingly. I object to CPS leaders using NTA to divide these Chicago communities. Uh, we love our, uh, community, uh, members in, in, uh, Chinatown and in South Loop and in Bridgeport. I object to the mayor going on TV and keeping praise on Forrest Claypool-
Sir, thank you very much for your time.
-when he should be on school praising-
Tara Lockwood, please?
Good evening, Tara, T.A.R.A. Lockwood.
L.O.C.K.W.O.O.D.
That's the student.
Thank you.
Um, I'm here to read a letter that was written, um, to the Chicago Board of Education of the Chicago Public Schools, um, by the parents of students in National Teachers Academy's Regional Gifted Center, but I'd like to make clear that we, that isn't a distinction I'm generally comfortable making. For the most part, my child is just another student at NTA. Um, however, CPS makes that distinction. So if it is on our behalf, I'd like to say, "We are writing to address the current proposal to change the South Loop attendance boundary and convert National Teachers Academy into a neighborhood high school for the South Loop community. This would also involve moving or phasing out NTA's RGC. We strongly disagree with this effort and urge you not to move forward with the plan that we made for our children's education were deliberate. For many of us, this started with visiting different regional gifted centers across the city, registering and testing our children, and carefully ranking schools. We talked with teachers, administrators, and parents, and subsequently selected NTA as the best choice for us. We had other options. We could have gone with reach different regional gifted centers, high-performing magnets, or neighborhood programs, but we chose NTA knowing that unlike some other Chicago RGCs, it is a school that puts RGC students and neighborhood students together for lunch, recess, and enrichment. This was important to us as we saw the school that was racially, socially, socially, economically, and religiously diverse. Also, the, the level of academic rigor in NTA is second to none and NTA has high expectations for students both academically and socially. We ask that you keep our NTAs growing RGC intact, adding a kindergarten class each year until each grades have an RGC so that we continue to remain a part of the NTA-
Thank you very much. Will Jasmine Harris, please, get in line, and Donetta Jones behind her? Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Your Honor. Uh, Louis Makarowicz, L.O.U.I.S.M.A.K.A.R.E.W.I.C.Z. I'm here as one of the representatives from Chicago United for Equity, or otherwise known as Q, which recently produced community reports and racial equity analysis on the NTA question hours. I was one of the authors of that community report and was also facilitator of the racial equity analysis that engaged over three hundred participants from impacted communities over three town hall sessions over the past couple of months. Some major community concerns that made themselves repeatedly apparent included unequal benefits to burdens on low-income students of color who have, uh, been, uh, accepting the burden of sacrifice, uh, in this question, uh, in service of advantages which are largely, uh, taken over by more affluent peers. Uh, additional concerns highlight the displacement of students, especially within the context of historical legacies of school, uh, school closures in Chicago, as well as a disproportionate impact on poor communities of those closures. Messaging sent by shutting down a One-plus-rated program, especially given that existing programs such as Dunbar and Phillips are currently available and have the potential to be strengthened, uh, was of additional concern for participants. Alternative proposals exist, including moving NTA to new independent facilities, investing and strengthening existing high schools, including Dunbar and Phillips, selling the old South Loop facilities to generate up to thirty-five million dollars in capital funding for a new high school, redistributing selective enrollment seats from Jones College Prep and moving on to Phillips and Tilden, and five, hosing South Loop's K through sixth in their current facility and expanding the seventh through twelfth grades in the new building at Sixteenth and Dearborn, allowing NTA to persist at its current location. Thank you very much. Alternative proposals exist. The community hopes that they are considered.
Thank you very much. Uh, will Jermaine Cade get in line, please? Is this Jasmine?
Yes.
Okay, and you're a student?
Yes.
Bring that microphone down, please. Please begin.
I am a third grader at NTA. I don't want you to co- to take my school away because I have, I had to, the best time at NTA. I learned reading, science, swimming, and math. My school is a Level One-plus school and I don't want to lose it. I love the way my classmates are so nice. They made our school a Level One-plus school. My teacher taught me a lot of things and I don't want that to go away. Please don't take my school away, please.
Thank you very much. Will Karen Wong get in line, please? Did Jermaine get in line?
She's gone.
Pardon?
She's, she's gone.
She's gone?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Oh. Get in line, please. Carry on, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Donetta Jones, D.E.N.E.T.T.A.J.O.N.E.S. Um, I have two students at NTA, I'm a parent, an NTA parent, and in two thousand and thirteen, they were displaced from the previous school. And the new school that they attended did not bode well for them. They both had academic and emotional problems, I know from experience. They would get frustrated, I would get frustrated, and my prayers were answered when I moved to twenty-thirty South State because NTA is right across the street. I take my, when I registered them, I had such the nicest time registering because the staff is just, the staff of NTA is phenomenal. My daughters went from being Ds and Fs students to As and Bs, and they love the school, they love the students there, they love their teachers. My youngest daughter gives everyone a hug at this school and I just, I'm begging you not to, please do not close this school because my daughters have already been through an emotional trauma being displaced from one school. I do not want them to go through that again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, you are?
I'm Karen Wong.
Okay, and will, excuse me for one minute, will Ben Shanbaum, uh, get in line, please? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, that's, uh, my name is Karen Wong, spelled W-O-N-G. I'm a lifelong Chinatown, Bridgeport resident and attended CPS schools throughout my entire educational career. I'm here to speak to Chinatown's need for a neighborhood high school. I think the greatest need that a high school would address is the issue of language access or lack thereof in our community. Now, I was lucky enough to test into Walter Bank College Prep, but a lot of my family members were not as fortunate. My cousin Alex, for instance, immigrated from China to start his sophomore year of high school in Chicago. He did not place into any selective enrollment high school and enrolled at a South Side neighborhood high school. Class material was already difficult on its own, but was even harder for Alex to follow due to the fact that the class was taught in the English language, which he was not well versed in at all, just having immigrated from China a month ago before school started. With no access to language support, he started falling behind and was too embarrassed to ask for help or raise his hand in class. He eventually stopped attending class altogether. The weight of the new material he had to learn, coupled with the inability to understand the language the classes were taught in, in the first place, led him to drop out of high school his junior year. That was twenty-eleven. Today, it's even harder for our kids. Now that there is a rigorous tier system, ESL and ELL children who live in Tier Three but do not actually have the socioeconomic privilege of Tier Three must reach impossible standards to get into schools that meet their needs. This is why language access is important. Chinese students deserve an equal opportunity at doing well and succeeding in school, even if English is not their first language. Furthermore, language access is almost import, also important because bilingual language accommodation is important for parents to get involved in their children's education. My parents are small business owners in Chinatown who have always worked until late at night and still do. They simply aren't able to attend community meetings like this, and even if they did, the language barrier would serve as a huge obstacle, preventing them from ever speaking out and taking a stand, much like all of you guys are doing today. We don't have that same privilege. There's a reason I'm the only, the fourth person in Chinatown to speak out tonight. This high school will serve as a step in the right direction of ending the cycle perpetuating the language barrier. It shouldn't stop here either. With Chinatown-
Thank you so much for being here tonight.
We want something-
Jermaine Cade? And will Chris Johnson get in line, please?
Good evening, my name is Jermaine Cade, spelled J.E.R.N.A.Y.N.E. The last name is Cade, C.A.D.E. I stand here before you, Your Honor, in strong support of maintaining National Teachers Academy as an elementary school, and I am vehemently opposed to converting it or transforming it into a high school. There are people who have asked me that are not familiar with NTA. Jermaine, your son has access, he has choices. Why do you care so much? A couple reasons. One, because one child is not the sum of a population of a school. Two, because NTA has values that we live by. The fact that Principal Castiles holds not only the staff and teachers accountable, he holds the students and the parents accountable. He leads with transparency and we all collectively, as a community, have come together to make the school what it is today. And I think, thirdly, because it's a case of have and have-nots and right or wrongs. So I've listened to when we talk about, we've developed a plan, but when one party of the plan has started developing it years before the other party is privileged to it, it's not right. And so I think, Your Honor, you are on the precipice. I liken you to Chief Justice Earl Warren. You are in a place where you're gonna have to make a decision. You're gonna have to make a decision that may be unpopular on the side of politics, but it is the right thing to do when you look at the transfix and what you've heard today. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I wish I was getting a salary, too. Debbie Lynn, would you get in line, please? Carry on, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ben Shanbaum, S.H.A.N.B.A.U.M. I'm the father, parent of a child attending South Loop and a child attending NTA. I've spent years of my life in several gray hairs on my beard, working with the South Loop community to try to help address its overcrowding problem. And I am vehemently opposed to the solution that has been put forth. It's bad. It manages to be a non-solution to an imminent catastrophe to despite everybody involved. First, it's clearly bad for NTA. Now, you've heard plenty of people talking here and it's not the fancy brickwork in the class windows, the lockers, it's not that that makes NTA what it is. It's the hard work and devotion and dedication and purpose of the people who are working there, of Mr. Castiles, the principal, Mrs. Riffenberg, who you heard from earlier today, that make that school, that have turned that school from Level Three to Level One-plus in four years. It's bad for the South Loop community because, as I said before, we've spent years and years fighting an overcrowding problem that has clearly resulted in sacrifices I've witnessed firsthand for my daughter. And we end up with a solution that just puts a new school at capacity, potentially overcapacity from day one, with the potential it's only gonna get worse. And it's really not a solution for those who are seeking a good high school. Now, this is a tempting apple that has been thrown in the direction of this neighborhood. However, we have to look at the, the numbers and the demographics. NTA is a building that can house two hundred and fifty to three hundred people per grade level. Right now, it's being promised to five hundred people per grade level in the guaranteed spot, another hundred and fifty per grade level in the preference boundary, and another three hundred and fifty people per grade level in nearby private schools. It's not a solution for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ivy Lamb, if you'd get in line, please? Is, uh, you are Chris Johnson? Is Chris Johnson in the room? Johnson? You're Debbie Lynn?
Uh, Lou, L.I.U.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you be good enough to spell- You're Debbie Lynn?
Uh, Lu, L I U.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you be good enough to spell your first and last name?
Yeah, W D D V I E L I U. Are we right? Okay. So I've been able to witness CPS as, as its best, as a proud alum of the New College Prep and its worst, when limiting public education from those who need it. I grew up with three younger sisters. One of the sisters, uh, worked hard but struggled with test taking. She was, she wasn't able to grasp the topics as quickly as her peers. Overall, she was just a B student. And she did her best, but she was not matched with her chosen selective enrollments. So my parents enrolled her in a private school, uh, at DLSL. I remember she cried for days, wondering why she wasn't good enough after receiving the rejection letter. But this story is not uncommon for many residents in Greater Chinatown. CPS should not be in the business of only educating, or especially educating, high achievers. Average students like my sisters, new immigrants who barely speak English and have other issues, um, deserve an opportunity to reach college and to reach the top echelons of society. However, for residents of Armors Square and Bridgeport, growing up in an elementary school that is rated one plus but are left with two or lower nearby options, it is no wonder that families are sending their kids to private schools or moving out of the community altogether. So this NTA conversion is the first serious attempt by CPS to address the long-term, serious need of Chinatown. While this plan is beneficial for Greater Chinatown, NTA does stand the lu, stand the most to lose. So should this unprecedented proposal pass, thoughtful and considerable, long-term and transparent district, district-wide planning should accompany this and future plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And would Angela Lu or Lynn, are you? Okay, and also will Hongbo Wang, please get in line as well? Go ahead, please.
Your honor, uh, my name is Ivy Lam, L A M. Um, well, we, we all have a long day, uh, today and, uh, especially we saw a lot of like NTA's students and parents and we respect, you know, everybody's, uh, thought. And actually, I've been sacrificed for two of my kids, which is back to nineteen ninety-nine because of the high school issue. I make a decision to moving away from Chicago to West, West, West Suffer. But since my kids, when they're still in, um, elementary school, because they're eighteen months apart, my daughter and my son, and my daughter really wanna say, mommy, I really want to, to be with my, my, my brother, little brother, in the same school. So we decided to move. Of course, I understand not that many, you know, parents can afford to move away from their, their homeland. Chinatown, especially me myself, I have to work in Chinatown, so I have to drive every day forty-five minutes and my husband have to drive over two hours to his work. But after that, the main thing is my kids been lost their childhood friends from elementary school. They have to build their relationship and new friends in their high school. And when they come back to, uh, Chinatown and they lost all the connection. And even my daughter just get married and when he, she came back from New York, she asked me, mommy, you, we still don't have high school in our neighborhood? I say, yeah. So thank you very much and this is just my experience and, and I'm in favor on CPS's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, would, uh, Gioji, you get in line, please? Carry on, please.
Hi, um, good evening. I'm Angela Lin, spelled A N G L A, space, L I N. I'm the community outreach coordinator for CBCC, the Coalition for Better Chinese Neighborhood Community, which is a political advocacy and community development organization in Chinatown. Despite the Chinese having lived in this area for over a hundred years, Chinatown still has needs that are not met and have historically been pushed to later dates. This is not just schools. For example, Harding Square and Stanford Park were the only recreational facilities that serviced Chinatown for a long time. They were torn down in nineteen sixty-two when the Dan Ryan Expressway was being built, which also split Chinatown, um, into, and that was pretty devastating. Um, and the, and it wasn't replaced until two thousand. In the neck, in the forty years that Chinatown was neglected, other park investments were popping up in the rest of Chicago. Um, this neglect applies to schools as well. Chinatown was owned into Phillips and Tildens in the sixties at a time when there were clear racial lines that were never crossed. Um, since the twenties, there was Italian Armors Square to the, um, to the right, Irish Bridge, uh, Bridgeport to the left, and the Black Bell, as it was called, um, to the south. And if you cross any of these lines, you get beaten up. And even in the lines, many Chinese were still harassed. Half a century later, after race dynamics, city layout and immigration policies have changed Chinatown and Chicago so much, the high school assignments, um, have not changed to accommodate the ongoing flux of immigrants for the backbone of the residential and economic, um, community. So we surveyed like a bunch of, I'm, I'm, I'm running out of time, but we surveyed two thousand residents in two thousand twelve for their needs and education was, um, one of the highest. And we've been going to all the, um, NTA meets and racial equity analyses and it's really like, really touching to see, um, the strength that they show and even though they've been displaced so many times. And Chinatown hasn't really been displaced, but it has been neglected. And we do need, um, a high school that fits the language access needs of our community.
Thank you very much. Rochelle McGee, do you wanna get in line to, um, give your comments? No? Thank you. Okay, carry on.
Hi, uh, my name is Hongbo Wang, last name W A N G. I'm a-
And spell your first name.
Okay, H O N G B O.
Thank you. Carry on.
Um, I'm a community activist, um, as an educator and a parent. I always strongly, strongly believe that all the children are equal and all the children deserve to receive the best education they should. Children or all the students in Chinatown community definitely deserve a high-quality neighborhood school, neighborhood high school. And, uh, but the more, you know, town hall meeting I went and the sadder I feel because I gradually realized that the satisfaction of one group means sadness of another group. Uh, that means when people in one group get something, means another group will lose some benefit. I don't think it's fair. And I know CPS, um, is very resourceful and very, uh, creative. I believe CPS is able to find a solution which will meet the needs of both communities.
Thank you. And will, uh, Wong Lu get in line, please? Carry on.
Hi, I'm a student from Kelly and I'm a junior this year.
Okay, hold on.
So it's been a-
Hold on, just, just one moment. Don't start her trying to- Okay. Go ahead, please.
So it's been, it's been over like several hours and I have a final tomorrow, so I'll go quick. So, um, the last time I spoke is a year ago and this, like, this school thing is not done over a year. So I really want to, um, say something based on my experience, uh, of Kelly's school life. And it's not a bad school, but it also provide bilingual program. But I really want to, um, like, have a high school in Chinatown is because the immigrants is keep coming and Kelly is overcontaining. Like, it, there's so many Chinese and new people keep coming and I think the school is really like out of control sometimes. So, um, I don't think the Chinatown High School is not, is a bad idea. And, and further, I want, also want the future immigrant can receive higher education. So I really want the, the High School of Chinatown can, um, have a higher quality education. By the way, like Chinatown is a really awkward location. Kelly is really far away and I have to get up at six every morning to get to school on time. So for me, I really encourage this school. Like, I think these things, this work is working for the future immigrants, future high school students, uh, who are, uh, who is now going to Haynes or James Ward because it's not a bad, bad thing. And the location will be really best for the future immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And will, um, Liren Liang? I hope I pronounced that, did I pronounce it close? Okay, get in line, please, and thank you. Ma'am, if you will.
Shall I state my name again?
Yes, please.
Rochelle McGee, R O C H E L E, last name, M C, capital G E E. My statement is that the boundary for the school should include the people that actually paid to build the school initially. Our community would like to have the boundary for NTA to include the TIF. This neighborhood high school option is very good for the community. Your honor, please consider the expansion of the boundary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did Wong Lau? Wong Lau, it looks like L I U? Is that you? Are you a student? Okay. Carry on, sir. Are you a student, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Carry on.
I'm a freshman in Kelly High School and I graduated from, um, James Ward Elementary School. I came from China in two thousand sixteen. English is not my first language, so going to school here has been difficult. There were a lot of people told me that Kelly High School had a bilingual program, therefore, any reason immigrant like myself often end up attending there. I took the sixty-two Archer Bus from Chinatown to get to school. My commute is about forty minutes, but it's not the school I am tuned for. Although I attend Kelly, I do not like the school as when I was in China, students worked very hard to excel in every class. I feel the school environment here is different. At Kelly, I noticed that a lot of students were non-learning and even skipping class. In my class, students are noisy and I cannot listen to my teacher clearly, making it more difficult to learn as I do not understand English as well as my peers. Also, the facilities is not as clean. Outside of the school, students will smoke near the bus stop and with litter, litter too. This make it hard for me to learn and stay motivated in school. None of this would have been acceptable back home and my parents would worry about my future education, but I will still strive for the best. I wish for a school where it's environment safe and filled with hard-working students and staff who understand and need this, needs of immigrant kids as well. I want a school to prepare students for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will Erin Sanders and David Shapiro get in line, please? Student L, carry on.
I'm a freshman from Lantek College Prep High School and I graduated from James Ward Elementary School. I spend over forty minutes going to school now compared to a minute walk when I went to James Ward. I've been hearing that NTA is a great school and it should not be taken down for a new high school for the Bridgeport neighborhood. However, I feel bad and I don't know what else I could do. All I know is that Chinatown has been asking for a high school for many years and it is unfair that people are repeatedly putting this need aside. I hope CPS can make a decision with best reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you. And will Simon Shu, will you get in line, please? Yes, sir, carry on.
Erin Sanders, S A N D E R S. I'm a parent of two scholars at National Teachers Academy. Um, and your honor, I come before you, I know you're relatively new to the process, but I've been going to these, uh, various events for a fairly long time. And as someone who works in the business community in Chicago, I have to say, um, I am extremely disappointed with the way that the administration, uh, the way that Chip Johnson has managed the process with respect to the interaction between the different interested parties in this particular process. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the process for a couple of minutes, a couple of seconds, actually. This process has effectively divided four different neighborhoods and all of the interested parties in it. And I blame Chip Johnson, I blame Janice Jackson, I blame Alderman Dahl behind me for exactly creating the situation that you have here. Most of the Chinatown residents, as I've come to understand, badly do need, uh, their own neighborhood high school. They're not actually getting that out of this process and they were never really contemplated as part of the process either. Neither for that matter were the residents within South Loop. You've only heard from one individual within South Loop who's actually described this plan as a good one for him, and it is because his kids happen to be in seventh grade right now. Okay, so that means that they can immediately jump into this new NTA high school. Everyone else that you've heard from, the Aldermen, Tina Feldstein, um, the other interested parties from, from South Loop who've come into the town halls, they all have other interests at heart, not necessarily for any of the kids there. And you haven't heard anything like this from those parents. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about the high school. Someone's already described the numbers, the, the situation we have here. I happen to work in numbers. The math here really doesn't work, your honor. There's over twenty-four hundred individuals. We're only gonna talk about two thousand because of, uh, public schools. There's only, uh, there's only going to be twelve hundred seats for these individuals. I urge you to reject this plan. Take it back to the board.
Thank you. Uh, will Maya Cicero, please, get in line? And also Myra Romero? Carry on, sir.
Good evening, your honor. My name's David Shapiro, S H A P I R O. I am the proud father of a first grader at National Teachers Academy. Um, obviously, a whole range of problems with the CPS proposal have been identified tonight. The one I'd like to focus on, uh, is that it is reckless and profoundly irrational uh, in the sense that it is sacrificing two known and proven institutions uh, based upon the idea that it will create a fantastic, uh, new school in South Loop and a great new high school. But the fact is that these hypothetical future institutions are, no one knows if they're gonna be any good. That's a purely speculative assertion. CPS ought to know that you don't just open a school and be able to assume that it's going to be great. But all of the comments that we've heard in favor of this new high school are just assuming in a profoundly irrational manner. Meanwhile, an assumption is also being made that you combine National Teachers Academy and South Loop Elementary into a single school, that that's going to be smooth. Who knows? It could be a total failure, as evidenced by, by the, the other comments that have been made about, uh, larger schools, uh, being, uh, generally less successful. This is a classic example of the idea that rational people don't trade, uh, a bird in the hand for one in the bush. We're talking about shutting down, but profoundly transforming to extremely successful one-plus level institutions and replacing them with the total unknown. That is not a rational choice. That is not the sort of recklessness that is appropriate with children. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, and Rakiya Williams, if you'd get in line, please? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, um, my name's Simon Shu, S I M O N, S H I U. I've been to the Bridgeport area for forty-five years. I'm, uh, uh, my Kiko Lahiri, I'm an LSC member and, uh, and the president. And, uh, we have a hundred, we have a thousand five hundred students over there. And then, uh, I, I, I got my master's degree is a DPO, I've been in high education. Okay, so high education is built from the ground up. Right now, we stuck over here because when the Hili, grade eight student graduate, they cannot go anywhere. Some students might, they can go to San Antonio at the moment, but some students not. Just like my neighborhood, they are Spanish, Italian, Italy, or, or they have different country people who live in my block, but the thing is, they are frustrated, try to find a good high school for their own kid. And then they say for the Hili, we, the center within a mile, like, doesn't matter go east, west, south, north. I'm hitting the elementary school. I didn't hit any high school at all. I come here for forty-five years ago, I was frustrated for the high school. I go far away, about at least an hour per day. It's a winter time, it's about one and a half hour to two hour, one way. If I can spend those time to study instead of playing game or studying traffic, I can be, go for the PhD, but right now I'm stuck there. Okay? And then, uh, I- And then, I know that NTA is a limited seat for all the elementary schools. So, my proposal is to say, go forward, and then build a second NTA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, is this Maya? And Maya's a student?
Yes.
Okay. This is student L.
You had a L already.
Okay, hold on. Right, right. You are student M. Okay, carry on, student M.
Hello, I am a second grade grader at NTA. I love NTA a lot, so we need to keep it open. One reason is because if NTA turns into a high school, all the teachers at NTA will lose their jobs. Also, if NTA turns into a high school, I probably will never see all my friends again. And plus, there are a lot of enrichment classes that I enjoy, so please CPS, please do not convert NTA into a high school.
Are you Mayra?
Yes, it's Maya.
Okay, spell your first and last name. It is, excuse me for a second, I apologize, I asked you to do something, I'm speaking over here.
Yes.
Is Rakia Williams, is Rakia, Rakia Williams present? And is it Jennifer Sil?
She left.
She did? Chris Heck?
Hacker.
Okay, would you get in line, please? And Adonia James? Adonia James? Okay, carry on, please.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Mayra, M-A-Y-R-A, last name is Romero, R-O-M-E-R-O. I am a proud NTA parent of a second grader. All her teachers and staff are outstanding. I know her teacher works long hours, including weekends, because she cares about her students. Everyone there had, everyone there has very high standards for all students. NTA is a level 1+. Why close a top-level school? It is not fair for NTA students. There are other options. Some parents have complained about their teenagers' commute, having to take one to two buses or trains. I also took one to two buses or walked for blocks to avoid taking two buses. It's just for four years. That's just what people do here in Chicago to go to school. Most of the people took at least one bus, whether it was a neighborhood or selective enrollment school. And also, I don't want my young daughter to be in the same building with fourteen- to eighty-year-old boys. Please do not close NTA. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Adawa James? Adawa James? Matusso Marty? Would you get in line, please? Alex Au? Au, Alex Au? Carry on, sir, please.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name's Chris Hacker, H-A-C-K-E-R. First off, thank you for keeping the session open.
You're welcome.
I don't envy your position. My grandfather Edgar Jones served as a labor arbitrator for over fifty years, and as Judge Jones on television in the late fifties into the early sixties. And he shared many stories about the challenge that he faced during the times that he had to decide against the company, in the case of labor arbitration, that had chosen him due to the scene that the marshall facts that presented were presented to him, independent of the ever-present emotional realities. There are practical issues that have been discussed tonight. I wanna highlight three of them. As a parent of a, what will be a rising fourth grader, who will be as part of the RGC, in the, under the plan, combined hybrid school. The first thing is, is overcrowding. The boundaries, and you keep hearing people or keep asking for them to be expanded. Aside from that, the model that CPS has used assumes that the retention rate for the local, you know, people to attend their neighborhood school will remain the same as it is now, with underperforming schools. But the goal here is to produce a high-performing school, which if in fact they do that, that retention rate will go up. Those five hundred kids that can only seat, where we can only seat two hundred and fifty to three hundred kids is gonna get, go way over the top. The second issue is just spoken about is having my fourth grader sharing schools with kids four to six years older than him. The last issue that I, you know, wanna raise with the situation, you know, with respect to the plan, is that the, sorry, my screen didn't cooperate. The investment options talked about with respect to Phillips have been, are a false choice, you know, there've been facilities investments, not anything else. This is a closure, the policies and procedures haven't been followed.
Thank you very much, sir. Your name, sir, please?
Matzuo Marty.
Okay, would you spell the first and last name, please?
M-A-T-S-U-O, last name is Marty, M-A-R-T-I.
Thank you, carry on.
To Chicago's, CPS promises a commitment to every child from every community, but do they really? Where else been in Chicago where the school board closed a top-rated school, transforming the lives of black students? To Chicago's, where else been in a city CNN reported as the most segregated in the nation, where the school board closed a school where black students grow more than seventy-five percent of students nationwide? To Chicago's, where else been in a city that the term hypersegregation was created to describe, where the school board identified the same exact school as not high-quality for more affluent, more powerful families, and high-quality for less affluent, less powerful immigrant families? To Chicago's, where else been in a city divided by the have and have-nots, where the school board changed the rules for school actions to include unnamed requests as a trigger to intentionally close a high-performing school? To Chicago's, where else been in a city known for the Chicago way, where the school board claimed a lack of city funds to bill necessary resources, yet have money for a new police academy, new sports arena, and a new Ferris wheel? To Chicago's, eliminating NTA in order to provide a high-quality school option for people that are more affluent and more powerful continues to prove that all men aren't created equal. Chicago has a long history of providing, proving we don't actually live the promise of the Declaration of Independence. To Chicago's, demand a just Chicago, get woke, and black students matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I do not have any other cards in front of me for anybody who has signed up to be heard this evening. I will state, I will call these names again to see if somehow somebody has gotten passed over. Is it Batni? It looks like B-A-T-H-N-I. Toldon, T-O-L-D-O-N? Chris Johnson? Rakia, R-E-K-E-I-A, Williams? Adawa, A-D-O-W-A, Jones, or James, excuse me? Looks like Jennifer, S-I-double-L, Sil, or S-I-L-K? This is, this concludes the presentation of the evidence on behalf of the CPS and the comments on behalf of the community. I wanna remind you that the record in this case will remain open until tomorrow, Tuesday, January thirtieth at 5:00 p.m. You can submit written materials you want me to consider and make part of the record until that time, and you can either hand-deliver those materials to the attention of CPS Law Department at 42 West Madison, or by using email, using the following email address, transitions, T-R-A-N-S-I-T-I-O-N-S at C P S dot E D U. I wanna thank everybody who's present still in the room, especially the members of the audience, for taking your time. There are few things more important to us than the, than the work that was done here tonight in terms of the next generation, who are the future for all of us. So I thank you for your dedication, your time for being here and sharing your thoughts. At this time, we will show that it is nine forty-six. There are no further speakers, or no other evidence to come before this hearing, no other business to come before this hearing, therefore I close this public hearing again. My thanks, you all be well.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.